Good evening, and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone who is joining us tonight in person on Boston City TV and on Zoom. I'm going to ask everyone here in the chamber to please turn off the volume on your laptops or other devices so it does not interfere with the audio for tonight's meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee, under the October 23 meeting link. For those joining us in person, you can access the meeting documents by scanning the QR code that's posted by the doors. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The meeting will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. The recording will be available in all of the BPS languages. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation virtually in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabaret Yanin, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. The Zoom interpretation feature has been activated. Zoom participants should click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. We will begin the meeting with the approval of minutes. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 9, 2024, school committee meeting. Is there a motion?
So move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. The superintendent is unable to join us tonight, but I would like to welcome Senior Deputy Superintendent of Academics, Dr. Linda Chen, who is joining us in her place. Welcome, Dr. Chen. I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Chair Robinson, and good evening, everyone. I'd like to actually begin tonight's meeting with a moment of silence for long-term BPS educator Mary Susan Delora, who passed away last week. Mary Susan taught at BPS for 50 years and touched the lives of many, many students and staff with her kindness and wit during her years at the Tobin K-8 School, Mendel Elementary School, Lewinburg and Wilson Middle Schools, and Tech Boston Academy for the past 15 years. Bada and Quincy each also received $20,000. And thanks to an anonymous donor, the runner-up prizes this year was double the usual amount. I'd like to also congratulate all three of the schools, not just the Mata Hunt, for their dedication and success in creating welcoming and learner-centered environments for students. It was great to also see the enthusiasm of staff and parents that were there in attendance. I'm grateful also for longtime partnerships that we have with Ed Vestas and their steadfast support of our district. For the past 19 years, Ed Vestas has been recognizing the work and innovation of our schools with this prestigious award. We are especially thankful for the leadership of Ed Vestas' president and CEO, Maranel Ruzmanier, and the members of the 2024 School on the Move Prize Selection Panel. They certainly had a very difficult decision to make. As we continue to strive for equity and excellence, we look forward to learning from the innovative practices of these finalists and sharing their successes throughout our schools. On the next slide, I'd like to provide a transportation update. First, I'd like to share some recent good news about our efforts to electrify our school bus fleet. After a successful collaboration with many partners this past summer to install electric charging infrastructure at our Freeport Bus Yard, BPS Transportation successfully deployed 19 new electric school buses at the start of the school year. This deployment brought the total number of electric buses in our fleet to 39 buses, or 5% of our total bus fleet. Last week, representatives from the Environmental Protection Agency, or EPA, visited the Freeport Bus Yard in Dorchester and met with BPS Transportation to see the newly installed charging infrastructure and learn more about the district's efforts to electrify our bus fleet. The EPA also announced last week that Boston was awarded $4 million in grant funding as part of their Diesel Emissions Reduction Act, or DERA, National Grants. As part of tonight's grants package, we are asking you to approve these two DERA grants, which will help us continue our work to electrify our bus fleet. The first of the 2022-2023 DERA National Grants bus purchase is $2 million that will allow us to replace 10 diesel school buses with newly-built, zero-emissions electric school buses and install 10 DC fast chargers and supporting infrastructure. The second grant, also for $2 million, will allow us to retrofit battery electric engines on 15 diesel school buses and install 15 DC fast chargers and supporting infrastructure. In combination, the grants will allow us to deploy an additional 25 electric school buses and supporting infrastructure, which will benefit bus drivers, bus monitors, and more than 3,000 students per day. The grants will help us deploy clean technology, ensure that we have the infrastructure to support effective operations, and provide students with a quieter ride. The funding will also reduce pollution and provide more opportunities for BPS families and community members to be part of a fleet electrification planning. I'd also like to give an update on our transportation on-time performance. The BPS Transportation Team continues to see steady improvement in the on-time performance of our buses, also called OTP. The team continues to make operational and routing adjustments each week to improve operational efficiency and address consistently late buses. The recent Orange Line service suspension from Forest Hills to Back Bay also ended this past Sunday, reducing overall traffic as the Orange Line trains return to their regular schedule. Over the past two weeks, our morning on-time performance has averaged 90% of buses arriving at school on time, compared to 89% during the same two-week period last school year. 97% of buses have arrived within 15 minutes of on-time and greater than 99% have arrived within 30 minutes of on-time over the past two weeks. I see Dr. DePina over there. We are making progress, but we know we still have work to do. Over the past two weeks, 79% of afternoon buses arrived at school on time, compared to 87%, the same two-week period last year. Over the last two weeks, 92% arrived within 15 minutes of on-time and 97% arrived within 30 minutes of on-time. Our afternoon OTP for Monday and yesterday was 81% and 82%, respectively. Nearly 13,000 families, representing more than 16,000 students, or 75% of our bus riders, are utilizing the Zoom mobile app. We encourage all families to download the Zoom mobile app and reach out to the Transportation Team at 617-635-9520 for any support. We have some more bright spots. You might notice that this week's superintendent report's slide deck has a new look, thanks to the BPS communications team. Is it not up?
It's normally placed there.
Yeah. We hope the new design invokes a more inviting and positive feel. The team has undertaken several big projects and continues to implement updated district branding so that our communications are immediately recognizable to our students, families, and school communities. Next slide. Representatives of the Boston Ballet visited third graders at the McKay K-8 School last week as part of its longstanding City Dance Fall Into Dance program. Students participate in a one-hour movement workshop. Established in 1991, City Dance is a tuition-free program accessible to 3,000 BPS students annually. On the next slide, I just want to highlight that the BPS Office of Family and Community Advancement is hosting its second annual open house on Thursday, November 7, right here on the first and second floors of the bowling building, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. BPS representatives will be joined by community partners to provide valuable resources for students and families, as well as hands-on activities, food, and refreshments, music, and raffle prizes. There will be something for every age group, including information on internship opportunities, so we hope everyone will come out. Interpretation services will be available, as well as transportation, from the following locations: Codman Square Library in Dorchester, Maverick MBTA Station in East Boston, and the Matapan Library in Matapan. I hope you will all stop by the event. It is going to be a fun evening. Next, we have more highlights. The Shattuck Awards. Congratulations to BPS teacher and reading specialist Jane Kelly, who was one of 11 city employees honored with a 2024 Shattuck Award on Thursday, October 17, by the Boston Municipal Research Bureau. The annual Shattuck Awards are given to outstanding city employees who are recognized for their dedication and service to the people of Boston. Jane has worked for BPS for 20 years as an ELA teacher, inclusion specialist, special education teacher, and reading specialist. This year, she joined the instructional leadership team at the Mary Lyon Pilot High School in Brighton, where she shares her wealth of knowledge and expertise. She also works with the school's soccer and basketball programs. Jane is also the first second-generation Shattuck Award recipient. Her father, Daniel Long, who served as a youth service officer in East Boston, received the award in 1999 and encouraged Jane to go into public service, specifically teaching. I also want to give a shout-out to Brian McLaughlin, a former BPS employee and one of our city partners, who is also honored. Now a senior project manager for the city's Public Facilities Department, Bryant has been instrumental in making the new Carter School a reality. Slated to open next year, the Carter serves the district's most high-needs students. Congratulations to both Jane and Brian on their well-deserved honor. We'll go on to the next slides. The Umana Dual Language Academy community celebrated Latinx and Hispanic Heritage Month on Thursday, October 17, with music, dancing, and presentations from members of the school community. School leader Nia Fransalon also unveiled the school's new mural, "Umana Rising", created by the local artist Felipe Ortiz. Next, Tech Boston Academy football coach Raoul Brown was recently named the New England Patriots Coach of the Week. Andre Tippett, an NFL Hall of Fame linebacker and executive director of Community Fairs for the New England Patriots, met with the Tech Boston Academy Bears, where he presented a $1,000 donation to the football program on behalf of the Kraft family and the New England Patriots Charitable Foundation. Tech Boston also beat Boston Latin Academy 32 to 26 during a city league game for the coveted Joe Mason Cup, a trophy named for longtime Dorchester High School football coach Joe Mason. The two schools have battled for the cup over the past 20 years. Boston Latin Academy won 13 games, and Tech Boston has won seven times. Tonight, I'm going to close with news from the Division of Student Support. The team recently launched 617 Sundays, an innovative sports wellness program tailored for BPS athletes and beginners, designed to both introduce and nurture their skills in basketball, softball, volleyball, and more. We are offering comprehensive training and access to resources to help bridge the gap between raw talent and honed skill. In the first three weeks of the program, we have more than 1,000 registrations and over 250 different families attended the various programs. And there are plans to expand the program to include pickleball, dance, tutoring, and indoor soccer. For beginners, the program serves as a gateway to understanding the basics of these sports. For more seasoned players, it's a way to sharpen their skills while also building their confidence. While all student athletes participate in sports, parents can participate in yoga and dance. We are also excited to announce the launch of the Discovery Hub Program, a collaboration between BPS Student Support, Boston City Councilor Brian Worrell, and Livius Prep for students who attend the Henderson Inclusion School, Lee Academy Pilot, Shaw Taylor Elementary School, and Tech Boston Academy. and Tech Boston Academy. This unique, day-long Saturday program is designed to provide students and families with equitable, on-the-spot academic and social-emotional support, along with athletes in a holistic and engaging environment. The program began on Saturday, October twelfth, and will run until Saturday, December fourteenth, at the Henderson, and includes tutoring, study skill-building, and homework support, sports and physical wellness, parent activities including workshops, yoga, and zumba, and social-emotional learning activities. And that is the superintendent's report. Back to you, Chair Robinson.
Thank you, Dr. Chen. I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee. I'd like to remind my colleagues about our agreed-upon norm that we each have five minutes. That's one to two questions. Please make sure your questions are on topics related to the items in the superintendent's report. Other topics not related to the superintendent's report can be raised during new business later in the meeting. I'd also like to remind BPS staff to be brief in your responses, and please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
I have a question. Oh, you had one?
No.
No, you go.
No, I was pointing.
You were pointing to me that I had a question. This may be for new business, so let me know. But we talked, I brought up last time the vote on November fifth around the ballot question two. What is also interesting to me is that if the measure goes through on November sixth as a district, we would have an option to change our graduation requirements for 2025. So in preparation, we just, as a committee, haven't heard about what the plans are if the measure is approved. And I'm wondering if we can talk about that this evening.
Do we have information about that?
We, we don't have any formal communication from DUCY right now as to what the plan will be. I'm, I know that they are certainly have a Plan A, Plan B, depending on vote, obviously. And I think that our next, that school committee meeting will also, we will be covering mass core requirements.
Yep.
So I, I know there will also be a pretty robust conversation about that as well.
It is, just to throw out there, it would be interesting, as folks are making a decision around where they stand, to know what the district will do on November sixth for their children. I know other school committees across the state have had this conversation exactly. Like, if it goes through, are we changing graduation requirements here? And if it doesn't, you know, business as usual across the state, but will be given agency over those choices as a district. And I just think it would be important for us to be talking about what, what the plan is in the near future.
I, I think what you will hear during that proposal, I think, so first of all, what we do will depend upon what the state is providing guidance on, as one factor. I don't know when we will know that information. And secondly, I think what we will have is certainly a robust conversation about, I think you've mentioned this as well. It's important to uphold high expectations, to ensure that our young people are graduating this system with the skills in academics and social-emotional learning, like all of those things, prepare to be independent. And also look at how we can ensure that that happens from a practical matter of the accumulation of credits, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Others? In your six one seven announcement, where are those programs taking place? This is the Sunday sports.
Oh, six one seven. I don't know if Chief Mc...
Reggie Lewis.
Reggie Lewis.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right.
Thank you all, and I'll now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
So.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the superintendent's report is approved. We'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Parvex?
Chair, we need to adjourn for five minutes to try to fix the screen.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will take a brief adjournment and come back in five minutes. Thank you.
Party.
answered this time, but are referred to the superintendent for late response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. The meeting will feature two public comment periods with the first comment period limited to one hour. Priority will be given to those testifying in person. Time permitting, the committee will then open it up for virtual testimony. After one hour, anyone who hasn't testified will have the opportunity to do so at the end of the meeting. We have 12 speakers this evening. Each person will have three minutes to speak, and I will remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. If your remarks are longer than three minutes, please email your comments for distribution to the committee. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Please note, the comments of any public speaker do not represent the Boston Public Schools or the Boston School Committee. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. Please make sure you're signed into Zoom with the same name you used to sign up for public comment, and be prepared to unmute yourself and turn on your camera when it's your turn to testify. We will begin this evening with our in-person speakers, starting with John Mudd, Jack Elliott Higgins, Deirdre Manning, and Chelsea Ruscio. John Mudd?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is John Mudd. I'm a resident of Cambridge and a longtime education advocate in Boston. I'm going to read to you two quotes from Marcelo Suarez Roscoe, the current chancellor at UMass Boston, who with his wife led the Harvard Immigration Project that studied 400 immigrant children. The quotes are from one of their books, Children of Immigration. One, how do immigrant students acquire a second language? Research suggests that the best predictor of success is the skill amassed in the child's first language. Cognitive skills developed in the first language can greatly assist in the learning of the second. And the second quote, another common myth is that native language use at home interferes with the acquisition of second language at school. In fact, children who speak two languages have special advantages. Building on similar findings, other experts strongly encourage parents to talk and read to their children in the home language. I want to urge the school committee, the superintendent, deputy superintendent, and senior staff to consider the implications of this research and these recommendations by experts. Building on the foundation of native language is a better way to learn academic English and lay the groundwork for the development of further bilingual skills. The parent's role in using native language with their children at home is critically important and should be strongly encouraged. BPS could develop a campaign to enlist parents of multilingual children to understand the value of speaking and reading to their children in their native language at home. It could provide leadership and direction to principals, teachers, family liaisons, social workers, and other staff to participate in such a campaign with parents. This wouldn't require waiting for the long-term development of bilingual teachers in TBE or dual-language programs, although there should be a much more rigorous and detailed plan to develop these teachers and programs in the future. BPS has the resources and staff now to promote parents' use of native language at home. It just requires the political will and leadership to implement such a campaign. I plead with you to change the direction of BPS's strategies for multilingual education. In your retreat on October 28th, please discuss the alternative approach which could give reality to the principles of culturally and linguistically sustaining practices, instead of continuing to double down on the failed English immersion strategy of the past. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd. Next speaker is Jack Elliott Higgins.
Good evening. My name is Jack Elliott Higgins. I'm a Jamaica Plain resident, and I teach special education biology at English High School. This is my fourth year in Boston Public Schools, and throughout my time in the district, I have seen a variety of implementations of inclusion. None of them, in my view, were done right. I spent the first three years of my teaching career at Boston Green Academy, where about 40% of students have IEPs and every single class is an inclusion class. During that period, the level of support I had in my classroom was in the range of zero at the minimum, often, and the maximum was two months of a paraprofessional in my substantially separate classroom, two months out of a 10-month school year. A paraprofessional job in Boston Public Schools simply does not pay enough to entice qualified candidates to fill vacant positions. The district is failing to implement inclusion at schools, even with semi-cohesive inclusion models. There's never enough money, there's never enough educators, and the golden standard of co-teaching is always a pipe dream. This year, at the English High School, I teach all substantially separate, small-group classes. I have inconsistent push-in services in three of my four classes from resource room paraprofessionals, so most of the time I'm on my own. To the best of my knowledge, this puts the school out of compliance with special education law. I'm supposed to have a paraprofessional or at least another adult in my classroom at all times when I'm providing those service minutes. The school has simply not been allocated enough funding to staff those positions. It's not a failing of our administration, they simply do not have the funding or the positions allocated, and that's frankly ridiculous. The chaos of this inconsistent or non-existent support in my inclusion in special education classrooms, it's a huge issue. I'm certainly not alone in this. I look around to other districts, and I see many sustainable and thoughtful implementations of inclusive education, and I often wonder how long I can last in Boston Public Schools. We live in one of the wealthiest cities in the wealthiest country in the world. It's downright criminal that our city government refuses to fund special education. It sets our students up for failure, and it further perpetuates the racial and socioeconomic injustices baked into our education system. I'm here to ask you to do your part to find the funding for inclusion done right and paraprofessional pay equity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Deirdre Manning.
Good evening. My name is Deirdre Manning. I'm a Dorchester resident and single parent of two public school students. I wanted to let you know that I attended the meeting on October 16th, which was the information session over Zoom for families who are interested in applying to exam schools. A lot of these issues are still unfortunately in play, there haven't been many changes, if any, and a new year is starting with people wondering where this process is going. I took some screenshots of the chat, just to let you know some of the things that were being mentioned. One parent asked if there would be any adjustments to the minimum composite scores and if they will be made more equitable across tiers. Additionally, what is the date that the seventh-grade minimum composite scores and bonus points for the following school year will be released? Transparency around these scores is important for parents to understand if their child has a realistic chance of admission, given the significant discrepancies in admission requirements. Another parent asked, how will I know what tier we fall under based on our address? The person was referred to the website to enter the address and get your tier. Tier will be updated in December. On the website, on the webpage, on the slide deck, it said, "Midwinter." Last year, it was January 7th, and a December update is going to be a bit challenging because according to the American Census Survey on the U.S. Census website, that information isn't going to be released until December 12th. Another question, what if your charter school is using number grades, one to four, for eighth grade? That also happens for sixth grade as well. These are standards-based grades that Boston Public School Committee members understood put BPS students at a disadvantage when applying for admission, because it depresses your composite score, it depresses your GPA. So they enacted a special process that gives additional points to Boston Public School fifth graders, but they will not use that for charter school sixth or eighth graders. They make them convert it back to A to F, and when they do that, they depress the overall GPA. That is super frustrating. It's a double standard, it's definitely not equitable, and that should be remedied. Here's another one, is tier one awarded the most points and tier eight the least, or vice versa? This relates to the fact that there are different points awarded by tier. The response is, we do not know how the points will be allocated by tier as of this time.
30 seconds.
Do you expect the number of points students in each tier get if they attend an extra point school will change this year? Again, as of now, it's the same, we'll let you know if it changes. We live in an area that is tier seven, but we are in subsidized housing. I know this building is not owned by BHA, but can my son get additional points based on that as well as my income? Unfortunately, we're only able to give points to students in BHA housing at this time. This is super frustrating, a lot of inequity, it continues, you're starting another admissions cycle, but no changes have been made.
Thank you very much. Your time is up.
Please, let's make this clearer to folks. Thank you.
Next speaker is Chelsea Ruscio.
Good evening. My name is Chelsea Ruscio. I live in Brockton, Massachusetts, but I teach at Dudley Street Neighborhood Charter School, right down the street from here. I teach multilingual learners and special education students, and I'm testifying in support of our inclusion contract proposals that would end posting new positions that require multiple licenses. I wanted to share a story from my own work. I think it illustrates the importance of these proposals and why a team-based approach to inclusion is so effective for our students. Last year, my team, the second-grade team, was faced with a dilemma. Many of our students were reading below grade level and struggling on tier-one phonics assessments. We decided, as a team, to restructure how we would teach tier-one foundations. We coordinated with both second-grade classroom teachers, myself, the special educator, and our reading specialists. Based on the data, we made groups, and we were able to address students' individual needs in smaller groups, co-teach when it made sense to do so, and flexibly change groups as students' needs shifted. We saw immense growth in our students. This was only possible because we had the staff and resources available. We're very fortunate, this is not the case across the district, and that's why I share it here today, because if it had just been one classroom teacher with multiple licenses, they would not have been able to create the flexible groups that these students needed, and we would not have seen the growth that we did. Our students deserve access to an education where they can get the small-group instruction they need to grow, and that simply can't happen under the multiple-licensed model. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next group of speakers are Hannah Didenbunny, Madison Cronheim, and Julia Morales. Hannah Didenbunny?
Hello. My name is Hannah Didenbunny. I am a ninth-grade physics teacher, right down the street at Madison Park Technical Vocational, and this is my first year teaching. So I've been teaching for only seven weeks, but I already love my job. I love being in the classroom, and it's a privilege to be a part of my students' lives. However, it's not been easy, and everyone warned me that the first year of teaching is always difficult. I teach inclusion classes, including one class where nine out of my 24 students are on an IEP or 504 plan. I don't have a co-teacher or a paraprofessional, so my students are not getting any additional support that I know that they would really benefit from. I'm worried that I may be asked to get a second special education license, so that the district can ask me to accomplish the job of a special educator and a general educator at the same time. When it's just me in the classroom, I cannot give every student the attention they need and deliver special education services. Getting that second license won't change the fact that I'm still one person who can only be in one place at a time. My students deserve the attention they require, and we, as the teachers, deserve better and more sustainable working conditions. I love this job, but the current conditions are setting me up for burnout. Asking a single teacher to deliver special education instruction at the same time as general education is unsustainable, and it guarantees that students won't get the attention that they, or the instruction that they're entitled to. Inclusion classrooms require a separate special educator who can deliver IEP and 504 services, and who aren't required to do the job of two people at one time. I don't want to burn out, I don't want to no longer enjoy my job. I do want to work in sustainable working conditions, because that's what my students deserve, that's what we deserve, and it benefits all of us. One teacher can't be asked to do the job of two or three people. That's why the Boston Teachers Union is demanding an end to the multiple-licensed model in our contract proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Madison Cronheim.
Good evening, members of the school committee. My name is Madison Cronheim. I live in Jamaica Plain, and I'm a fourth through sixth-grade ABA classroom teacher at the Joseph Lee School. I'm here to speak in support of the BTU's contract demand to cap the ABA strand classes at 10 students staffed by one teacher and two paraprofessionals. This is a really important issue to me, because as an ABA teacher, I have a firsthand view of the detriments that going over these numbers can have for students and staff alike. Boston Public Schools says through their mission that they are committed to eliminating access and opportunity gaps, but this cannot happen without appropriately-sized classrooms and proper staffing. Picture this scene, you have 10 kids in an ABA classroom, two paraprofessionals, some kids wear diapers, are verbally limited, difficulties transitioning that involve flopping for long periods of time, kicking, scratching, biting, self-injurious behavior, putting both the students itself, other students, and staff in really dangerous situations. You're expected to not only teach their IEP goals, but also to modify the general education curriculum, and this might not even happen if you were handling behaviors. This is a typical day in an ABA-based classroom. Those classrooms that currently must deal with this all, plus the addition of another student, which is currently happening at my school, are struggling to provide students with an equitable education, one that the district claims we're able to do. Frankly, it is evident that those allowing our classrooms to have more than 10 students have not spent a significant amount of time in our classrooms. On October 8th, over 200 educators throughout the district, including strand specialists, teachers, paraprofessionals, and ABAs, sign onto a letter that was sent to the school committee and the superintendent about this issue, and a response has still not been given. Boston School Committee, I urge you to meet the BTU's demands, keep ABA classroom sizes capped at 10 students with one teacher and two paraprofessionals, as well as create new classrooms and/or reallocate students in classrooms that currently exceed these numbers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next, our last in-person speaker is Julia Morales.
Good evening, superintendent Skipper, and BPS school committee members. My name is Julia Morales, and I'm a resident of Dorchester. I am coming to you from Sociedad Latina, an out-of-school-time youth development organization located in Roxbury, as their development specialist for the youth community organizing team, many of which you can see behind me. My colleagues, Victoria Garcia, Stephanie Aguayo, and Alexandra Oliver-Davia, have spoken at previous SC meetings this fall about the concerns that Sociedad Latina has regarding the teen mental health crisis, particularly related to the use of social media. In my role, I work with high school BPS students to advocate and organize around issues that affect them. We see the negative impacts of too much screen time, the harms of social media, including unhealthy comparison, misinformation, racism, self-harm, and cyberbullying. According to the author of Behind Their Screens, adolescents are especially susceptible to the social pressures of social media due to the period of development their brains are in. With an increased amount of reward-seeking and little practical experience for impulse control, teens are inherently more sensitive to the feeling of social exclusion. Social media is a quick and constant way for them to receive the social validation, but they can just as easily be exposed to enormous amounts of social rejection. Social media is not the only concern we have regarding teens and tech. With AI on the rise, misinformation and misunderstanding of how these algorithms work is already spreading around the world. They are not true intelligence and are heavily influenced by the biases of those who create them. The Algorithmic Justice League is doing work on making legal protections for all, from digital redlining in housing, healthcare, and the workforce. But until then, people of color need to be aware of this digital profiling. We are requesting that BPS provide workshops and teach-ins on responsible digital citizenship and AI across all students in the district. We need to address the digital knowledge divide that is happening for students at this time. We need to prepare all youth, and particularly youth of color, with the knowledge on how to use the technology to their benefit, as well as when it is being used against them. Sociedad Latina is requesting that BPS create a committee that includes students, parents, guardians, and external organizations that work with youth to advise on the BPS no-cellphone policy. We need to understand what is and isn't working. From my conversations with young people, this policy is not followed across all schools in the district, and is instead a classroom-by-classroom, teacher-by-teacher experience. This causes confusion among students and families. If we hope to teach students accountability, we need to be doing the same. While many adults may deny an unhealthy relationship with their tech, we are all susceptible to the addictive aspects of being online. I implore us to continue to educate ourselves, so we can properly prepare the youth of today for the world of tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now transition to speakers on Zoom. Our speakers are Mike Heischman, Cheryl Buckman, Trevor Smith, Sharon Smith, and Keandre McCray. Mike Heischman?
Mike Heischman, Dorchester Beja. At our last two meetings, I had raised the issue of MCAS, one of the ballot questions in this year's election. The proponents of question two would end the harmful practice of denying a high school diploma to those who fail the test. I had asked Ms. Skipper and the school committee to join with other superintendents, school committees, city councils, and other elected officials and endorse its petition. Thank you, Mr. Cardette Hernandez, for bringing this issue up at our last meeting, for expressing your opinion, which I am in disagreement, and for asking your colleagues to discuss an important issue facing our children and their education. Chair Robinson responded that it was the school committee's tradition not to take a public position on matters that go beyond our political boundaries. The absolute silence of the rest of our colleagues was a strong endorsement of the moral and political cowardice of our appointed body. I want to make three major points and attempt to persuade the public why we should not only vote yes in question two, but also for the BPS to create a much better curriculum and assessment system. One, MCAS, the Massachusetts Child Abuse System, is damaging to all of our children. Standardized tests and test preparation waste students valuable time, which would be better spent in preparing our children for the education that they need and deserve. Test prep is boring, frustrating, and stressful. Student curiosity, engagement, and joy are banished. Rather than seeking to inspire a love of learning or enthusiasm for the subject, teachers preach test-taking tips. Why is it that no private school in our state has chosen to subject their children to MCAS? Shouldn't our children deserve better? Two, MCAS is especially damaging to our children of color and low-income children. Students in schools who test poorly, the consequences are horrific. Education is replaced by the judgery of working in test-preparation laboratories. Why go to class? Why go to school? Should it be surprising that this system manufactures so much despair and failure? Poor attendance and high dropouts are predictable consequences. Every child in Boston across the state, regardless of their race, ethnicity, and class-
30 seconds.
... have to pass a test in order to receive their diploma. However, the opportunities that we give to our children, both inside and outside of our schools, to receive a quality education in school and MCAS and other standardized tests vary enormously. For Black and Brown children, those who have special needs, and those whose primary language is not English, the MCAS system is designed to harm these children the most. Number three, we must move forward and provide-
Thank you, Mr. Mike Heischman, your time is up. Next speaker is Cheryl Buckman.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Buckman. I'm a BPS parent to a sixth-grade student who attends the Dever in Dorchester, and I'm a lifelong resident of South Boston. I am here before you tonight to talk about the ongoing transportation issues. No parent should have to hear these words coming from their child. Mom, I'm okay with being late. They can just mark me tardy. This happened on September 5th, which was the first day of a new school year, and this is my son's final year at the Dever, and I wanted him to share that joy of getting on the bus and not having to rush into school. Oh, wait, it gets worse from there. September 9th, my son's busted and dropped him off until 3:28 p.m. Drop-off time was at 2:40 p.m., and he missed his therapy session. On October 4th and 16th, he aborted the bus, and he was marked as a no-show. This is highly unacceptable and a major safety concern. I did report it to Transportation and was told it would be handled. And the reason I got was the bus had mechanical issues. What is a bus doing on the road that has mechanical problems? Shouldn't a covering bus be taking over until this bus is fixed? Are we waiting for an accident or worse to happen? School committee members, I entr- ... trust my child to BPS to try to and from school each day. What are we going to do to ensure this problem is fixed and no other parent has to go through what I currently am? Don't want to get the worst-case scenario phone call about my son's bus. We must do better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Trevor Smith.
Good evening, members of school committee. My name is Trevor Smith. I live in Rosedale, Massachusetts. I teach at Boston Latin School. I'm a new parent of our child, Miles. I'm here today to speak in support of the BTU's contract demand for fair pay. This is important to me, because fair compensation is not merely a financial issue, it is a matter of equity, respect, and the ability to provide for one's family with dignity. Firstly, fair pay acknowledges the unique challenges faced by Black educators, who often serve as a vital role for, vital role models for students of color. Our presence in the classroom is not just about imparting knowledge, but also about inspiring students to envision limitless futures. By ensuring equitable pay, the school committee can affirm the value of diversity and representation in education. The impact of inadequate pay is profound. It can affect a teacher's ability to support their family, invest in the children's education, and contribute to their community. Financial stress undermines our well-being, potentially impacting our teaching effectiveness, and consequently, student outcomes. A fair salary would alleviate these pressures, allowing for us to focus on our passion for teaching and fostering a nurturing learning environment. I urge the school committee members to take definitive action. First, make sure that we engage in transparent negotiations that recognizes the economic realities of living in Boston, where the cost of living continues to rise. Second, let's try to implement a structured plan for regular salary reviews to ensure ongoing fairness and competitiveness. By addressing these concerns, the school committee will not only enhance the quality of education, but also demonstrate a commitment to justice and equity. This approach will set a precedent for valuing all educators, fostering supportive and thriving educational community, where every teacher, regardless of background, is empowered to succeed. Boston School Committee, I urge you to meet the demands of the BTU. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Sharon Schmidt. Doesn't seem to be in the meeting, so we will go to our last speaker, Keandre McCray. Please unmute yourself. Thank you, we can't hear you there.
Sorry, I'm good now?
Thank you, Keandre.
Apologies. Good evening, members of the school committee. My name is Keandre McCray, proud of the EMK Health Careers Academy and BSAC, and the new executive director of the Boston Education Alliance. We are a coalition of parents, students, educators, and community leaders committed to building a more equitable public education system. I'm here to express our strong support for Massachusetts Ballot Question Two. We seek to remove high-stakes testing as a graduation requirement. High-stakes testing disproportionately harms marginalized students, those from low-income communities, English-language learners, and students of color. In Boston Public School, MCAS failure rates are more than double for those groups, contributing to higher dropout rates and disengagement. Instead of promoting learning and critical thinking, high-stakes testing narrows the curriculum and focuses, forces schools to teach to the test, cutting back on subjects like arts and STEM. Massachusetts spends over $30 million annually on testing, money that can be better invested in mental health services, after-school programs, and cultural responsive curriculum. By voting yes on question two, we can move forward for a more meaningful assessment that evaluates students' diversity- that evaluates students' diverse talents and skills. It's time to eliminate the barriers and create a more just and equitable education system for all students. I urge the school committee to stand with Boston Education Justice Alliance in advocating for yes vote on question two. Together, we can create a more equitable and financially stable public education system. And for everyone who's listening, remember that this election is more than yes, just yes on two, but it's also about the preservation of our democracy. The deadline for voter registration is October 26th, the deadline for early voting is November 1st, and the election day is November 5th. So please read the ballot questions, stay informed, form your own opinions, and vote, and encourage your peers, friends, and families to do the same. Thank you for your time and consideration. High standards, not high stakes.
Thank you, Keandre. That concludes a public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Parvex. Thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspectives. Your testimony is very important to us. Our first action item this evening is the grants for approval totaling $23,212,191. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Chen for any final comments.
Thank you. Tonight, we are asking the school committee to approve a gift to English High School to establish two scholarships of $1,000 each, which will be awarded annually to two outstanding students. One for a student athlete and one for a student who demonstrates an interest in business. English High School was named as a beneficiary in the estate of alumni David Levinson upon his passing. The school will establish a trust that will fund annual scholarships for graduating English High School students. According to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the Boston School Committee must vote on whether to allow the district to accept the gift of $70,000 from the estate to establish the scholarships. Here's a little background on Mr. Levinson. He was born in 1941 and graduated from English High School in 1959. He attended Boston University, where he earned a bachelor degree in theater arts. After serving in the military, he spent his career working in public relations and management of various orchestras and theaters around the country in Ohio, Maryland, Florida, New York City, Georgia, and here in Boston at the Boston Symphony Orchestra. We are grateful to Mr. Levinson for making this scholarship possible. Chief Financial Officer David Bloom is here tonight to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions, Ms. O'Neill?
I just have one quick one, and Mr. Bloom, thank you for that. Dr. Chen, I've been here a little while. This is the first time I remember something like this, and I know, in fact, some of our other high schools get named in estates all the time and have scholarships set up in perpetuity. So I'm just interested in why this one is coming forward, and I thank, you know, Mr. Levinson for remembering his alma mater and his will and his estate planning and thinking of his fellow students. I'm just curious why now.
I think maybe the difference, without knowing some of the specifics of the other examples, is this is going to be a city-managed trust. So the money will sit with the Treasury, and we will work with them and the English to determine the awards each year. I imagine that's a distinction.
Because in other schools, some have foundations.
Maybe it's at a foundation.
Right, but then also, the district has a foundation as well, so wouldn't it have typically gone into that?
It may have in other cases. I think we have actually a number of district trusts. I could pull the information up. Some of them quite old, that are operated by the Treasury and that we manage each year.
Think all the way back to Benjamin Franklin and funding the Franklin medals, right?
Yeah, there's some old ones in there. So I think sort of when we are taking this particular approach of having it be a city-managed trust, then we have to bring it before this body.
Okay. It's just the first time I remember that happening, so it was a bit of a surprise to me.
It was a little bit of an unusual circumstance for us as well, so.
Okay. Thank you.
If there are any other questions on this, we're taking a separate vote on this, and then we'll take another vote on the grants as a whole. So the question is, is there any further discussion around this gift? If not, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the donation as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the donation to English High School is approved as presented. So I want to go back now to the grants. Are there any questions or issues amongst the grant packet? Ms. O'Neill?
Sorry, I'm inquisitive today. I did have one question about the Children's Hospital grant for vision and extraordinarily grateful to the partnership with Children's Hospital. They do so many things with us around our students' social and emotional health as well. I did notice that this was part of the city pilot program, so I like that they're donating with regards to that. My question is, I was a little confused when I read the outcomes because it talked about delivering vision exams to a minimum of 38 BPS schools, then later said identifying schedule to district-wide events. Is it doing both? Is it going specifically visiting 38 schools and to citywide events?
Yes, that is my understanding.
Perfect. Great. And do we know how the schools have identified?
I believe they're looking at data on student need for exams, so either sort of the BPS health team does our sort of standard screeners, and so that can turn up some data of students who are struggling with vision as a part of that. So I think the health team is looking at all of that data to identify sort of the highest-need schools for this part, for this grant.
Good. I hope it's done that way. I'm firmly in favor of this. To me, this fits in with, no pun intended, the superintendent's vision for hub schools, right? And that's if you visit the hub schools that we've had so far. It's about providing health services like this in addition to academics. So thank you to Children's Hospital for stepping up.
Any additional questions, comments? All right, thank you. If there's no further discussion, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the grants are approved. Our next action item are the six collective bargaining items. You will recall that our last meeting, Labor Relations Director Jeremiah Hassan reviewed highlights of the agreements. Two memorandum of agreements between the Boston School Committee and the Lunch Hour monitors, the FY25 supplemental appropriation requests to the Boston City Council in the amount of $457,886 to support the cost of the agreements, two memoranda of agreement between Boston School Committee and cafeteria workers, and fiscal year 25 supplemental appropriation requests to the Boston City Council in the amount of $881,479 to support the cost of the agreements. I will now invite Dr. Chen to offer final comments.
Just, I think Chair, you covered all of that. I'll just invite Director Hassan to come to answer any outstanding questions that school committee members may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hassan? Well, okay. The committee will now take a series of votes, one on each item. If there are no further questions, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Boston School Committee and the Lunch Hour monitors for the period of September 1, 2023, through August 31, 2024, as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Parvex, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Abstained.
Ms. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Boston School Committee and the Lunch Hour monitors for the period of September 1, 2024, to August 31, 2027, as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Parvex, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Abstained.
Ms. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 25 supplemental appropriation request to the Boston City Council in the amount of $457,886 to support the cost of the agreements as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Parvex, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Abstained.
Ms. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Boston School Committee and the cafeteria workers for the period of September 1, 2023, through August 31, 2024, as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Parvex, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Boston School Committee and the cafeteria workers for the period of September 1, 2024, through August 31, 2027, as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Parvex, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Thank you. Finally, I will entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 25 supplemental appropriation requests to the Boston City Council in the amount of $881,479 to support the cost of the agreements as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Parvex, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Robinson. Thank you, committee members. We appreciate your support.
Our only presentation this evening is a Transformation Schools update for quarter one of the school year 2024-2025. Let's aim to keep the presentation within 30 minutes, and I will now turn it over to Dr. Chen.
Thank you, Chair. As the team makes their way up here, my team is here this evening to give the first Transformation Schools quarterly update of school year 2024-25. As a reminder, Transformation Schools updates to the school committee are part of the requirements of our Systemic Improvement Plan, or SIP. Like tonight's report, the first and third quarter updates are in-depth, formal reports. The second and fourth quarter updates are included as part of the superintendent's report. Tonight's presentation follows our report two weeks ago on the school year 2023-24 Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System data, or MCAS results. At that meeting, we shared that Boston, like other school districts across the state and the nation, has not seen significant change following the performance decline connected to the COVID-19 pandemic. However, Boston is making progress towards meeting its improvement goals by meeting or exceeding 48% of its improvement targets set out by the state. And we have reported on October 9th, the district was not identified as requiring assistance or intervention. Fifty-four schools do not require assistance or intervention, while 43 schools are designated as requiring assistance or intervention, similar to 2023. As reported at the last meeting, we exceeded targets for reducing chronic absenteeism in non-high school grades with an average rate of 27.1%. BPS met the targets for the chronic absenteeism targets at the high school level with an average rate of 47.5%. Tonight, you will hear more about chronic absenteeism in our Transformation Schools, as well as more about our continuous improvement strategy, which combines our high expectations for curriculum and instruction with ongoing educator development and a focus on school climate and culture and family engagement. The district's 39 Transformation Schools, 22 schools improved their accountability percentile, five schools improved above the bottom 10%, and five schools remained above the bottom 10%. Tonight, we will review the district's overall progress and improvement in the areas of academic growth, chronic absenteeism, and overall accountability ratings. The majority of Transformation Schools are making progress, but we recognize the urgency to accelerate that improvement. The presentation will be given by Executive Director of District and School Transformation, Mike Saban. We will hear in more detail about two schools, the Curly K-8 and the Ellis Elementary. School leader Katie Grassa from the Curly K-8, and our Region Three School Superintendent Natalie Diaz-Ack are also here to share more about the two schools. Chief of Teaching and Learning Leslie Miller is also here to provide additional information and answer your questions. I will now turn it over to Mike. And just a reminder from the chair, 30 minutes is our presentation time.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Chair Robinson, school committee, Dr. Chen. I'm happy to be here to present our quarter-one Transformation School update. As Dr. Chen mentioned, tonight's presentation builds on the MCAS presentation from two weeks ago, focusing now on the performance of our Transformation Schools specifically. We will review important strategy and overall school performance of our Transformation Schools. Then we'll look more closely at two of our schools. This presentation tonight will help us think about what it takes to make forward progress and the next steps required to further accelerate improvement. Let's take a moment first to review what the label "Transformation School" means in BPS. As part of the state or DESI accountability system, every school in Massachusetts receives an accountability percentile rating between 1 and 99. There are approximately 15 schools at each of those accountability numbers statewide. The number is based on a formula that includes MCAS achievement, MCAS growth, access progress, chronic absenteeism, and for high schools, several high school-specific indicators. Schools that are rated at or below the 10th percentile receive state oversight, approximately 150 schools statewide, 10% of the schools in the state. These schools at or below the 10th percentile also receive additional BPS support, and we call them Transformation Schools. That's a BPS term. Each year, over the past three years, some additional schools have been added to this category in BPS, based on declines in their accountability percentiles. Nine schools have also risen above the 10th percentile, which you see here in green. We have not removed supports from these improving schools, as we have not wanted to interfere with the factors that are helping schools to progress. For the remainder of the presentation, we will share data on the 39 Transformation Schools identified prior to this year. The six newly-added schools that you see in the right-hand column were just identified in September and are just starting to get initial support as Transformation Schools. Dr. Chen previewed this, but the headlines for this quarter's presentation are clear. We see encouraging signs of progress, enough to build our confidence that the district improvement strategy is working in the majority of Transformation Schools. We also identify serious challenges and needs. There is urgency to accelerate improvement and make adjustments in several areas and at certain schools. I ask that we keep in mind both of these themes and the tension that they create throughout the presentation. We are motivated by signs of progress in our Transformation Schools and- We are motivated by signs of progress in our transformation schools, and we know that much more improvement is needed. I also want to address a repeated school committee question during recent presentations, during recent meetings. When have we waited too long for a school to improve? Our answer in the transformation office is that we should never wait. We should continuously measure progress and make adjustments if a school is not progressing. There is no reason why we cannot help a school move forward. Throughout this evening's presentation, you will see an effort to recognize where progress is taking place and a commitment to adjusting and strengthening our strategy where we are not yet moving forward. We have a vision for our schools, one that every parent likely shares for their own child, that every student in every BPS school should experience a strong sense of belonging and be held to high academic expectations. We need our schools to be welcoming places for healthy development, and we need them to be academically demanding for every student. In the transformation office, we support schools in developing, implementing, and adjusting school improvement plans, 90-day quality school plans, that continuously work to strengthen school culture, school curriculum, and classroom instruction. The regional teams and the transformation office are expected to provide the support and resources that schools need to ensure ongoing improvement. Our frequent and ongoing school visits and the data that we collect and review help us to make adjustments in real time, and we expect schools to move forward. The transformation office is particularly focused on helping to raise academic expectations and improve instruction in all transformation schools. We support the hiring, coaching, and leadership development of outstanding teachers and leaders, and help them to implement grade-level curriculum in every classroom. We help schools to provide a strong core curriculum and to figure out how to provide extended learning experiences or additional support to students as well. We know that our students can rise to a higher level of performance if they are supported and challenged every day. We're going to spend a few minutes on transformation school performance at an overview level. The DESI accountability percentile is our state's summary rating. It combines all other measures into a single percentile rating from 1 to 99, with approximately 15 schools in the state at each percentile. We can see in this graph that 21 transformation schools increased their rating over the past year, five stayed level, and 12 declined. Keep in mind that statewide, the same number of schools decrease and increase each year as a fixed number of schools are at each percentile level. The fact that for two years in a row, more transformation schools have increased than decreased is a sign that our strategy is having an impact, though it is not enough. Please note, the ratings for every transformation school over the past three years are included in your appendix on Slides 25 and 26, as well as in a linked spreadsheet. We are intensifying our supports for schools that have not yet moved forward, and particularly for schools that have declined in accountability for multiple years. Strengthened support includes more concentrated leadership and teacher guidance from the regional office, expanded curriculum support from a partner organization called Attuned, and additional attention from the transformation office. This graphic shows the percentage of transformation and non-transformation schools that have improved their accountability percentile in the past year, with transformation schools on the top bar. Similar to last year, a greater percentage of transformation schools have improved their rating compared to non-transformation schools. This information reinforces two district priorities. First, strengthen the current support we are giving to transformation schools with a concentrated focus on schools that have not yet moved forward. And second, develop a set of more intensive supports for non-transformation schools, particularly in percentiles 11 to 20. Now we dive into the details a little bit. Slide 8 displays specific components of DESI accountability. This is where the accountability percentile comes from, and how transformation schools performed over the past two years. You see a column for 2023, two years ago, and 2024, last year. The highlighted column shows whether transformation schools improved or declined from 2023 to We can see improvement, green, in math achievement, math and literacy growth, English learner progress, and chronic absenteeism. We see a decline in literacy achievement. So what do we conclude from this information? Improvement in six out of seven key metrics suggests that our overall strategy is having a positive impact, and overall performance remains much too low, and literacy performance has declined. We must do better. As mentioned before, we are strengthening our coaching support and collaboration with curriculum partners for stronger implementation of the district literacy curriculum at all grade levels. Given that many schools and many thousands of students are making good progress with our district curriculum, we believe that all schools can improve with stronger implementation of this curriculum. Individual school details and data are, of course, much more important in our planning than this summary-level data. There is too much information at the school level to discuss here, but the appendix and linked spreadsheet do allow you to see school-by-school performance in each of these areas. Okay. The role of our transformation office is really to focus on next steps and continuous improvement. Our office exists to help schools get better, which involves working together to identify challenges and implement solutions. So we're going to spend some time now on the more challenging aspects of the data, which are defining our work for this year. This table shows MCAS growth, SGP, for student subgroups in both ELA and math. We want to see schools and student subgroups with median growth over 50. Growth of 50 or above means a student is learning at a greater-than-average rate relative to their peers in the same grade level and performance level. We want lower-performing students to have the highest possible growth, as that would mean they're closing achievement gaps. In these charts for English and math, we can see that transformation school students have lower growth than non-transformation students for 11 of the 12 subgroups listed. We can also see that growth is below 50 in nine of the 12 areas. We cannot close achievement gaps until all subgroups have an SGP, a median student growth over 50, frankly, a higher growth rate than students in non-transformation schools. This information tells us that we still need to refine a strategy that accelerates the growth of all subgroups, which is the reason for our broad focus on curriculum implementation and access to grade-level instruction for all transformation school students. Additionally, the district focus on inclusion and on universal access and universal design will help move forward our lowest subgroup, which is students with disabilities in both math and literacy. Our next two slides do show that growth has improved for almost all subgroups in transformation schools over the past two years, but this improvement has not yet brought us to an acceptable level. That's the tension I spoke about at the start. This reinforces our view that the overall approach is promising, but more progress is clearly needed. We won't dive into the details on Slides 10 and 11 now, but I look forward to any questions you may have. Moving from academic performance to attendance, which is Slide 12, we can see a similar pattern of improvement with an urgent need for further progress. As we have discussed in previous meetings, overall chronic absenteeism has been reduced in transformation schools over the past year, as it was as well during the previous year. At the same time, absenteeism remains too high, particularly at the high school level. We simply cannot meet our goals as a school department or a city with over 50% of our transformation high school students being absent more than 10% of the time, more than 18 days per year. This is a challenge that our schools are working on every day, and it's also a challenge for our city as a whole and an effort that all of us need to take on together. So let's turn now to two very interesting case studies. We try to share examples of the work at the school level in these presentations. Both the Curly K-8 and the Ellis Elementary have been transformation schools since before 2019. Neither school is being presented tonight as an exemplar or as a finished product. However, both are examples of schools that, in terms of DESI accountability, were stuck for a number of years, and they are both now moving forward. We can learn from them, even as we push with them for continued growth. As you will see, the Curly school has shown accountability increases for three straight years, but is still working to address internal achievement gaps and ensure high growth for all students. The Ellis school, identified by the state as a school of utmost concern, is at an earlier stage of improvement, but we are very excited about their initial progress over the past year. Consistent with tonight's theme, we will hear from each school about areas of progress and the important adjustments and commitments that each school is making in the current year. So first up, I am happy to welcome Curly K-8 School Leader Katie Grassa. Katie?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Katie Grassa, and I am a lifelong resident of Dorchester, a graduate of BPS, but more importantly, the proud principal of Curly K-8. I have been the leader there for the last 12 years. I would say that when I started at Curly K-8, the Curly way was everyone does what they want, when they want. There was not a consistent set of practices happening. Now the Curly way is that through strong collaborative teams, we're able to equitably implement the district curriculum and learn and grow together as a community. This took a shift of mindset, clear systems and structures, collaborative time of all the adults sharing their ideas and best practices, opportunities to build trust, and willingness to grow together as a community. Looking back, I can see the school shifts within our school culture were foundational in our overall growth now in terms of academics. We are an inclusive community that works to ensure that all of our students with disabilities and our multilingual learners have access to grade-level, relevant learning, and enrichment in both in-class and outside the classroom as well. This is particularly important because 20% of my students are currently enrolled in substantially separate programming within the space. We were thrilled to be chosen to be part of the first cohort of BPS schools to go through the IPT process, our inclusion planning process. We have collaborated with the Boston Teachers Union, BPS, and families to become a more inclusive community. We currently are supporting the inclusion of our students from substantially separate programs such as ABA, SAR, and SLIF. Before launching into discussion accountability and school improvement, I want to celebrate how proud we are of our school culture. Curly cares is our school slogan. It sums up our goal of developing a school community that celebrates the strengths, interests, and contributions of every student, every family, and every staff member. We have recently just achieved a five-year high in terms of MCAS math and literacy growth for our accountability level, which has now increased to 19. We believe this increase is directly related to the important work of the inclusion planning team that has taken place over the last two school years. It has helped us to create a vision on how to implement inclusive education, on how to give students access, and this vision, as well as our 90-day plan, has included implementation of the high-quality instructional materials through BPS, co-planning and co-teaching, where educators are working collaboratively together to make sure all the students are able to meet the standards, coaching for our teams and individuals, engaging families, and finding a balance of focus on both school climate and instruction. Both are important pillars for moving the work. I want to thank the district for their investments in instructional coaching, social workers, family liaisons, and regional support teams, whose support and expertise have made an impact on our growth as well. This is not work that has been done alone. It has been done in collaboration with many partners and supports, and we are greatly appreciative to all those people who have helped. While we are proud of the progress we have made, we still have pervasive opportunity gaps. This is particularly noticeable when you look at our students with disabilities and our multilingual learners. In order to close these gaps, we are going to continue to implement our plan. We are staying consistent on course. We are seeing the growth and the progress that our students have been making. We are also tweaking our plan slightly. We are making revisions to build upon our strengths from the previous years. Our data, both MCAS and observational, show that we need to ensure improvements of every subgroup of students. In our current 90-day plan, we're emphasizing engagement and content discourse by every student in every classroom. While this is a strategy that will help all students, it will be particularly supportive of our multilingual learners and students with disabilities, who through discussion and practice can acquire language at a much higher rate. We are looking forward to accelerating the academic growth of these subgroups during the coming school year. One of our school climate initiatives is around implementing MYCAP. This is particularly happening in our middle school, and having our students with disabilities and multilingual learners engage in conversations about their future, and working with our adults to help them achieve steps to get to where they want to go in their future, whether it's career, college, military, or other options kids may have. I wish I had more time to celebrate the amazing educators who work in my school every day. We couldn't do this work without their dedication, their time, their love for the children, and their consistent high standards that our students rate on our school climate survey. I also want to thank our students and families who continue to work with us, push us, and strive each day to bring their best selves to school. I will end by inviting you all to come visit Curly K-8, so you can come and see some of this great work in action. Thank you.
Thanks, Katie. And we will turn to Ellis Elementary.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Natalie Diaz-Ack, and I am very proud Regional Superintendent for Region 3. Unfortunately, our Ellis school leader was unable to be here this evening, so I apologize for the late change, but I will read a statement prepared by the amazing Principal Ivy and his team. At the Ellis, we pride ourselves for having a diverse school community. We have built a strong school culture, a school pride, making sure that every student feels safe and welcome. All students and staff participate in Ellis clubs to increase a sense of belonging. We offer a variety of arts, drama, dance, music, and visual arts, allowing students to explore their interests and talents, and we've partnered with Flourish Agenda through the Boston Public Health Commission to provide trauma-informed care to all members of the school community. We celebrate that there are five different languages commonly spoken at the Ellis community, and every student at the Ellis is valued and belongs. We like to say that the Ellis is a learning lab. It's not just the students who are learning, but the adults as well. It's not just the students who are learning, but the adults as well. We are learning how to be better teachers to give students the instructional support they need to achieve their potential. We are proud that the Ellis is on the move, but we have a long way to go and are just getting started. Our current accountability is in the fourth percentile, an improvement over the past three years, but not close to our goals. We want to be clear that the Ellis is far from where we want it to be, but we have seen some promising signs of growth. We have significantly reduced chronic absenteeism over the past year, and our MCAS ELA student growth is the highest in the past 15 years." Yes, that is 15 years. "We have focused on the implementation of the district grade level curriculum in literacy and on extensive coaching from our school and regional coaches. We are particularly excited that this literacy improvement is led by the above-average growth of our English language learners. We can see that our strategy in literacy is working, and we will build on that this year. And trust us, we can see that the same growth is not yet happening in math, and that is an area of focus for us this year. We have clear next steps to build on progress and accelerate improvement. We know we are very early on in the improvement process and also that we are on the right track. We are motivated by our improvement and also know that our students can achieve more. We must increase the level of rigor of student tasks in every classroom. We have a clear plan of lesson internalization and a weekly schedule for observation and feedback to push toward that vision. We have deepened our investment in instructional coaching to better equip our teachers with the best practices to meet students' needs and allow coaches to work in more depth and in areas of their strongest expertise. We have adopted a new math curriculum in all grades and enlisted regional and district supports to accelerate math improvement. We know that we are early on the road to excellence, but are confident that our strong school culture and improvement in literacy provide a strong foundation and evidence that we are capable of great things. Thanks so much for the opportunity to share, and we hope you will pay us a visit and see the Ellis Learning Lab in action. Thank you."
Thank you both. Big thanks to the Ellis and Curly School Communities for their great work. Both of these schools have wonderful students, fantastic faculty, and a feeling of joy in their hallways and classrooms. Both are great learning environments. I am confident that one year from now, we will be celebrating continued improvement at these two schools as well as at many others. This final slide in front of you summarizes the investment that the district is making in transformation schools. We can see significant financial commitments, with the largest being the full-time instructional coaches that are at each school. It is also important to note that one large support for these schools is not represented on this slide, which is the priority attention given by our nine regional teams, with Dr. Diaz-Aike as an example of a leader of the Region III team. Led by our school superintendents, these teams work to prioritize support and provide elevated service to our transformation schools. I thank you for your attention. That was a lot of information, 28 minutes full of details, and we look forward to your comments and your questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I'll now open it up to my colleagues for questions. Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the report. I love when Mike say, "No vamos a soltar esas escuelas aunque marquen progreso. Me gusta esto."
I do like what you said, Mr. Mike, that we're not going to let those schools, we're not going to abandon those, we're going to stay there, work for them. I like that.
Entonces, me gustaría que me hablara un poquito más. ¿Qué es el plan que van a hacer para que estas escuelas no vuelvan a perder el nivel? Que continúen con ese nivel de progreso.
So I would hope that you could elaborate a little bit, provide more details. What is it that you are going to do to prevent a regression, a deterioration from what the schools were before? How are you going to prevent that from happening? What plan do you have in place?
Thank you for your question. We do not want to abandon any school. We want to wrap our arms around them and help them and support them. It's a little hard to answer because each school is different. And so the most important thing is that those of us in the district and the region spend time in the school, in the classrooms, and speaking to the faculty, students, and families of the school to help figure out what is needed. But what I will say is that in this time period after COVID, finding and keeping great teachers is hard. And so a lot of what we do is support schools with recruiting teachers. We're competing with districts all around the state for these teachers. And then, once they're here, supporting them and coaching them and giving them the most collaborative environment we can to work in. Because in the end, getting, training, and supporting great teachers for every student is the most important thing we can do.
Thank you. Yo estuve buscando en la presentación a ver si ustedes habían colocado la data que nos da la comparación de los resultados por programa para los aprendices del idioma inglés.
I was trying to look at the information, the data that you have that compares, the data and the progress that it is part of the English language learners. I was looking for that data as part of the presentation, the comparison.
Específicamente cuando lo colocan en diferentes programas, ESL, DSE, ESL, ¿cómo podemos medir y comparar el progreso que tuvieron estos estudiantes?
So my question is, how is it that we are going to be able to compare, to evaluate, the progress that different ELL students had when they were put into different programs? What are the metrics to quantify the progress of this particular population?
Específicamente cuando lo han colocado en salones generales.
In particular, when some of the students had gone into a general education?
That is also a great question, and I realize that that information, not only is it not included, but within transformation schools, we have not yet looked at it that way, by the different models in each school. So I will pledge to you that I will try to look at the data in that way and see if there is a pattern that we can learn from.
Thank you. I can't wait to look at the result because it's important. Porque de la única manera que podemos ver un progreso es si comparamos qué pasó, cómo estaba antes, cómo está ahora, para nosotros poder ver que estos programas sí ayudaron o no, cómo quedaron nuestros estudiantes, aprendices del idioma inglés.
Yes, thank you.
I'm looking forward to hear that data, that information from you because the only way that we can evaluate progress, we have to look at the past to be able to quantify and to know how much progress we are seeing. And that's the only way we can do it. I'm looking forward for that information you're going to share with me.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Remember, Polanco Garcia? No, please go back and respond. I wanted to address some of the first question that you had, which was, and I agree with Mike, that it is, each school individually is different. And I think what we are doing now is going beyond the foundation that we've been building as a whole school in terms of HQIM and making sure students have strong Tier One and some of the staffing work that Mike talked about. And also now really shifting even more into the individual student. So what do the individual students need at the schools? And so in the slides, you'll see that there are, when we look at the different groups of students, they're not equally making the same kind of progress, which tells us in terms of our plan that we need to do more for some students in very particular ways than others. So I would say, in general, the plan moving forward is also building upon that foundation of Tier One instruction, but looking very much at the individual student level to see improvement. And to your second question, I know Mike will follow up and work with our data teams to get that information together for you. I do want to also mention, as you're reviewing that data, to remember that currently, unfortunately, and this has been something the state has raised to us, the way our programs have been run are very inconsistent in terms of which students are in them, for how long, and how the teaching is happening in those programs. So when you get that information, I would love to have a conversation. Maybe we can meet with you to talk about some of the variations. One of the challenges that we have is that a program by name does not mean the same thing in every school building right now. And so that's another consideration in terms of looking at those data.
Just a couple of questions to start. One that particularly jumps out at me is slide 25, looking at the accountability percentile. So I thank you for the presentation and the data. I guess what I'm also, another way to think about this is, are we seeing a reduction in the number of schools that are showing a negative trend in those accountability percentiles? So that's my first question. And then, a little bit more insight into, you began your presentation sort of with this, with this idea around, when do we consider stronger intervention? So I look at this chart and I see something that jumps out to me like negative 19 in a one-year trend, which is alarming, right? And so I'm wondering how you're taking these accountability percentiles into account in terms of like, when do you, when does this sort of trigger stronger intervention? So that's my second question. And I guess the third one is, thank you for showing the investment slide at the end. And so I think, is this also a question of, we need to invest more here from our standpoint? Because I think that would also just help us as we're thinking about the budget moving forward.
Great questions. Thank you. So the first question is about what we make, I guess, of the schools that are dropping and how we think about stronger intervention. So I've presented to you many times, I think, over the past three years. This is probably the ninth presentation. Sometimes it's the superintendent and sometimes it's me. But I think you're hearing a sharper focus this time on what you're asking about, which is which schools are moving and which aren't? And then, what stronger supports and interventions can we provide? So I think you're hearing our strategy adjusting, which is to identify those schools that now have patterns of not improving and figure out what we can change. I do want to say that each school has different circumstances. So everyone who looks at the accountability slide, that 19-point drop is the first thing they notice. It's very noticeable. There's also, if you look at this slide, it's a very interesting situation there. The school had very rapid improvement, the Gru Elementary School. It was a great success story. And School Leader Simon presented a year and a half ago with me about their progress, from 12 to 30 to 42, and then now we see a disappointing decline. That happens to be a school that we have a lot of confidence in right now. They had a 50% staff turnover, and it was really a case of a veteran staff had brought a turnaround through from underperforming to a great success story. And many of those staff members are regional coaches, are in leadership positions elsewhere. They didn't leave BPS, but they made natural career progressions. And there were simultaneously some leadership changes. And a new team is now in place with a strong leader who had been a principal at another school. And I would anticipate that this is a school we have confidence is going to move back up. But our current approach has us looking very carefully at each of those schools. This happens to be a school I think we're confident in, but we need to pay attention. We don't want to see a case where a school rises and then slips right back and we see them again in transformation. We've seen that in BPS since 2010, when the whole turnaround process started, is that some of our biggest success stories have ended up back in transformation again. So that's one of the reasons we're trying not to remove supports, and we're trying to continue working with a school like Gru, even though they're at the 23rd percentile, they're not under state oversight, but we're trying to continue supporting them. Based on each school's situation, sometimes there's something happening that we know is a big change. Let's say there's a leadership change, or a school has newly entered into transformation, so we've added coaching and more regional supports. Then we don't have a situation where we risk doing the same thing that hasn't been working. I think the schools we're thinking about the most right now are schools that have been in transformation but aren't showing the same forward movement as others. And that's where we're really working with the regional teams and the school principals to think about what exactly is needed here. And to go to your resource question, more resource, you don't hear me talk about resources too much because Boston has a lot of resources, and using them well should be our top priority. But resources are helpful. And the Ellis is an example of a school that's part of a new DESI grant this year. And that is allowing us to add coaching, to move from a coach focusing multiple subject areas to a coach focusing on their primary area, to add intensive tutoring for students. These are things that will help schools. So if we did have a way to invest more in a school that's not moving, those are the type of things we would want to invest in. Some investment in teacher growth, some investment in direct student services such as intensive tutoring. And we do believe that would help move a school that might be stuck. I hope I answered your questions. I don't know if you want to, either of you want to add to that? You good?
I can add, just, so we have a really robust regional model. And we've been working on developing this model over the past three years. And we've seen different iterations of it over time. And as we sit in our fall progress views right now, we're really thinking about, what are the needs of each of the individual schools? And how are we allocating the regional liaisons appropriately to service the schools in the areas where they have the greatest need? We're looking in all of our schools' quality plans. They are identifying groups of students who need more attention, who need more focus, and that is where we're making sure we're aligning our strategy. So we are very clearly identifying how we are going to monitor progress in those student groups, how we are providing additional support, and then what the learning is for the educators to continue to develop and build their capacity in those areas. And so we're really trying to leverage the regional model as a way to identify where there are needs and consistently go back and revisit where we need to improve in those areas.
Yeah. Hi. Thank you for being here. Looking at the information, the percentage that you provide us with in terms of MCAS, transformation, non-transformation schools, in my view, don't even reach the level that we see as necessary. So I wonder whether the MCAS test is effective or not. For everybody who's listening on question two, I wonder whether that MCAS test is the standard test that should be used to gauge our student on their performance. But that's, you know, that's aside from, because I look at the information, I'm very much, how do you say? The depression hits me pretty hard. But my question today is, in terms of chronic absenteeism, slide on page 12. 33%? 56%? Transformation is... Transformation is working, is it, on chronic absenteeism? Is it working? Yeah, I hear you that, you know, it's improving and all that, but look at the, look at the percentile, 33%. That means that 33% of the student population in a school did not go to school, right? And on the, on the transformation high school, 56%, 56.5% did not go to school. So how the heck are we going to apply the MCAS here? Given the chronic absenteeism that pretty much be leaders, you know, for the longest time. And I hear you, I understand that. You are, the transformation office are trying to do everything in every which way that you know best practices out there, whatever, you know, to help alleviate this problem. But in my own reading, this is even more depressing. My God, 33.7% and 56.5%. I appreciate your work, but I think it remains for us to see that if there are other practices, other ways of ameliorating this, hopefully in the future, given the fact that the question number two is going to affect us soon. Thank you.
So, I'd love to speak to that. So I agree that the data, the numbers are, they're upsetting.
Yes.
I think we should be motivated to solve the problem more, and it is, it could be depressing, but I think that's not the way we should all look at it. We should be motivated to take on this problem. This is a nationwide problem, and it's challenging, but we're making progress. And there are always things we're not trying out there. There's lots of good ideas out there. We're doing some of them, and there are more. And I'm excited to present this year's information to you in the mid-year in my next presentation, because our first look at it is that we're making progress. So I'll give a little brag about an example of a school I was at earlier this week, which is Madison Park, a school of top, top importance to all of us. They're really working on chronic absenteeism with the support of their region. They called the families during the summer with a multilingual team of people, every student that was chronically absent last year, whether they were at the school or a new student coming in, to make a plan for being there, to welcome them. That was a lot of outreach during the month of August. They have implemented a whole new attendance champion model. And looking at the information on Wednesday, they're 12 percentage points ahead of last year right now. That's a lot. And there are other schools also making big jumps, which is what we need when we look at these numbers. There frankly is no way for the high schools to show the growth we need, the transformation high schools, with chronic absenteeism like this. Even if you have a great teacher, if the student's absent 30 days, that's a lot. It could be more, but it's 20 or more. So this problem has to always be kept in mind every day. But we're motivated to take it on, and we're seeing practices at many schools and across the district, and frankly, other districts, that do make us hopeful. But it is very challenging. And we need the help more broadly, I would say, of the city, of families, and of the students themselves. We're rebuilding the culture of having strong attendance and being in school. But I think we do see progress, so I personally am hopeful about it.
Just a fringe question, additional fringe question. In information that you provide us, can we glean the kind of information regarding chronic absenteeism in ELL students, you know, bilingual students, students with multiple languages? The reason I'm asking this, because I do believe that students who are multilingual students who attend schools have a tendency of going to school more regularly. Just to emphasize on that point, when I was a teacher, more than 40 years ago, I was a bilingual teacher. My classroom is always, is always full, up to 60 or 80 students in a class at Bright High School, the school that I started out teaching. Eighty students in a class. And now I'm looking at this and I say, my God, 56%. It's ridiculous. I hear you, I understand that you are trying your best, you know, to prove this issue, you know, to somehow decrease or find a way to ameliorate, you know, this problem. But I thought as society is going further and further forward, school education is more of a need for everybody. And the way I look at it, it's going backward. Whether it is the fault of the parents, the teachers, or not, I don't know. But I'm not going to say that it is because of the students, no. There got to be something wrong with the education system or the parental system. So I appreciate your work, but I'd just like to stress the fact that we need more, you know, we need to work on this more.
The schools, I heard Katie make a sound, look at the attendance by subgroup all the time. I did not include that in this presentation, as it was the summary data from last year. But I'll make sure in the mid-year presentation that we have attendance data for all of the subgroups, because that's something that we have and that we look at regularly.
Thank you.
And just so that everyone is clear, so chronic absenteeism is calculated by 10%, so about 18 days of missing school. And one of the things, I know if the superintendent was here, she would very much emphasize the kind of work that she has been really pushing the team to do. So in today's superintendent's report, I gave some examples of what Chief McCarthy, for example, has been doing. Because you're right, it is not the students, it is, the students first and foremost are dealing with some things that are different today than even five years ago, right? Given the number of stresses students have. But it is our job to partner with our families and to also figure out different ways to engage students. And so you heard about a number of different ways of trying to get students to come to school, feel confident. And last time, we spoke about the connection between chronic absenteeism and MCAS, right? Because we want students to feel confident in something so that they will stay for the entire day, especially our high school students. Sometimes they're not absent the whole day, they're absent for certain classes consistently.
And I think this is an example of an area where the tension I spoke about is right in front of us. We're making progress on attendance at a rate greater than the goals that the state is setting for us. We're making progress. At the same time, we all know it's not at an acceptable level. So we have to hold both of those things. And I think we're hopeful because we see progress, but it's very urgent that we accelerate that improvement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I guess I'll start with just gratitude on some of our requests around data and the way that we do this presentation being heard, and I really appreciate that. And I know it's been a push to get us that school-specific data, and it means a lot to see that here today. You know, this is an issue I care deeply about. And I guess the first question I have is, as we're thinking about schools that are stuck, how many schools on this list are not showing forward movement? And I guess more specifically, how many would we say are stuck because they have multiple years of decline?
That's a hard question to answer, to give you a, to give you a number.
Yeah.
Well, it's obvious in terms of accountability, how many haven't moved. We can just look at the list and count. And we know the six new schools that have entered transformation have gone down, so we're very concerned about those six. By definition, they've slipped and we're adding new supports to them.
But I'm thinking multiple years of decline. So I see, you've given us data that shows a one-year decline. But I'm curious, like, how many schools are three or four years of consistent decline? That to me, there's a stuck with a one-year, but to your point, one year can be a 50% staff turnover. How many of the schools, and you're right, I could go through and do the analysis, but I'm imagining we know this, like, how many of the schools are we seeing consistent decline year over year? That's almost like a separate category for me in transformation schools.
Yep.
There's like the schools getting support that are sort of moving and growing, there's the schools getting support that have had a year of decline, and we're sort of trying to tune in and understand what happened. And then there's this third category, is like, schools who are getting support and they're either having no growth or continuing to decline despite the support.
Yep. So I have to confess, I did not tally up that particular category.
Back of envelope.
But multiple years of decline that were with the supports we're offering them, five to eight schools. And I think the question we have in those situations is, is something different enough in that situation this year that we feel good about the chances of changing the direction? Or do we still need to figure something else out? That's, so let's just say the number is eight. It may be of those eight, we're very confident in four. But at four, we need to do some more thinking. We're six weeks into the school year, or whatever we are, this is what we're working on together with the school superintendents now. For the schools that didn't move, do we feel good about the progress that we're starting to see? For, some indicators we can see right away. So Madison Park being an example, they were at one and they stayed at one. They're our top school of concern. All the other schools that were at one have moved up, which is great. It's a very positive indicator that their attendance is, chronic absenteeism has improved by 12 points in the first six weeks. That's one indicator we measure every day that we can see is progressing. There's a lot of new, there's a new school leader returning, there's new coaching in place, there's a new regional support plan for the school. We're very optimistic about movement there this year. There may be others where we're doing that planning now.
And I'm, I guess I'm curious, because like, every year is a start of a new year.
Yes.
That allows us to sort of like reignite an optimism around turnaround.
That is true.
And maybe because I grew up on the wrong side of the tracks. I'm less, and I've worked in education. I am optimistic around school turnaround, and I am less optimistic around systems like ours, moving fast enough to save kids from being in classrooms that are not serving them, and allowing them to make the gains that will, we know, impact long-term economic and health outcomes. So the, always the focus for me, right, you know, we've done this, is when is too long, too long? When do we, when are, when do we say to a family, this is no longer a viable option? We don't think this is a safe academic option for you. And I think there's like a real intellectual honesty around like, safe academic option. And I am curious, this is a real moment, of this list, how many of these are not making progress, or we think this is a really sound pedagogical option?
I don't think I'm going to answer that question maybe the way that you would want, but I want to give two answers to it. One is, our office is the office that has responsibility to push. That's why we exist. And we're trying to do that more each year. That's one answer. And then I want to give you an example of four schools that might have been in that category, but I don't actually think they are. So the state identified last year four schools for a very intensive grant. And they were schools that had been in the bottom three percentiles for multiple years. So those are schools like what you're talking about. And it was Ellis, YA, Frederick, and Higginson Lewis. And they issued this grant, it's the new school redesign grant that they used to do for turnaround schools, with the idea that these students would need some, these schools would need something extra to move out of that bottom tier. And we're very proud that three of the four schools, the four schools got the grant. But before the grant started, three of the four have moved to a level they hadn't in the previous five years, Ellis being one example. So we are optimistic that schools that look stuck, they can move, and we're seeing that happening.
But I guess it goes to something you said earlier, there's a difference between moving and then moving enough that you are moving with the system and you become an actual viable option for families. So like, we know transformation students have lower growth than non-transformation students. Those schools then need higher growth, a higher growth rate to actually be serving students well, and to be a viable option. So like, I may make a two-point move, but like, is it enough? And that can, and I know your work is rooted in optimism, like, to show up every day, like, you have to believe in the turnaround process. And my work, maybe this is where we have different seats, is to make sure families are getting the best option possible, and that we're pushing the district to take options off the table that are no longer good for them. And to not give you, it's like, serving food that is spoiled. And it's like, there may be, the food may be there, but at some point, like, that's not good food to eat. And I feel like we do this all the time, where we're like, we're not getting to the point of like, what, at what point is it no longer good enough to serve? And we do this, I've been on this body for multiple years, we're always just like, it's getting a little better. And so it's still good enough to serve. And I've said this to folks behind the scenes, I'll say it tonight, I think if we did a survey of central office staff at BPS, how many of them are sending their kids to some of the lowest performing schools in the city? I think we'd see that they know that food is not good enough to serve. And so I just, I guess my push is, and this is a bigger policy question, at what point is it not, what point do we as a body and as a district say, it's this many years, it's this percentage of growth, it's this many years of decline, that we remove that option because we believe, as we sort of say the word equity, like air here, because we actually believe in equity, and that part of that is to make sure the offers being, the options being offered are valuable? You know what I'm saying?
I share your urgency. I do not share the metaphor of something not being good enough to eat. We survey the students and the families, and we talk to them, and many families and students love their school. And they have the ability to leave if they want, and they don't want to. The urgency is that we owe them the best possible social, emotional, and academic experience in that school, and that's our responsibility. So that's what I think we're focused on. And the decisions about, the decisions about opening schools and others, those happen in different offices than the ones I'm in. The office we're in is making sure each school is a great social, emotional, and academic experience. And we are, I think this goes to Dr. Alkin's question of whether there are additional investments we could make to accelerate that? There probably are. Is there additional urgency we could bring to that? Yes, and we appreciate the push, because those are children and they deserve the best. It also takes some time. And even though we're as urgent as we can be, when we see forward movement, it can start an upward spiral. That's easy to understand. If your second graders learn a little bit more, they start third grade at a higher level. And if there's an accelerated learning in the third grade, you're going into an upward spiral where before you were stuck. So we're most preoccupied with is their movement in the positive direction. And I don't think the families are trapped. I think they love their schools. It's not really fair to a lot of these schools, the way they're getting labeled, because there are a lot of different factors at work. So we don't take their status as a stamp of shame, but we take it as a sign that they do need to accelerate the academic performance. And we share the urgency that you're presenting.
I guess my last question here, and I appreciate this, and you know, you know how I feel about this, like, as a body, we have to get to a place where we are naming, or at least as a district, we are saying something. And maybe we actually believe, and then that's the thing we have to say, like, every single one of our schools are actually high-quality, and they're valuable and viable options. every single one of our schools are actually high-quality and they're valuable and viable options. I don't know if we can say that. But the question that I have, and it's piggybacking off of, off of Dr. Alkin's question, is, his question was about resources and mine is actually about policy. Are there, while there are additional resources we, that may help accelerate outcomes, are there policy moves that would support acceleration? You know, in my mind, it's, there's like certain ones, like ending social promotion or focusing on literacy instead of summer jobs. Or, I don't know, summer programming that is aligned to academic outcomes and not just like fun youth summer programming when 30% of our young people are experiencing sub-literacy at times. So, I'm just curious, like, are there policies from your end that would accelerate more than just bodies? More bodies supporting instructional coaching and more of those additional services to help accelerate sort of teacher growth in delivery?
The, I don't think specific policies come to mind as much as direction. So, I think there are two factors that we know have the greatest impact on. So, first of all, because, I say that partly because I don't think there's a policy obstacle to schools improving. So, we can improve with the resources and structures that we have. Would some policy changes make it easier? That's a great thing to think about. But I don't think there's a wall that we can't get past. But we know if the quality of teaching goes up, students are going to learn more. So, that has a lot of implications for recruitment. It has implications for training, for support, for a lot of things. So, quality of teaching, the higher it is, the better students are going to do. Could there be a policy where students, teachers in certain schools are paid more than in others? We don't do that. But if you're talking policy for specific schools, I'm sure the Curly School would love it if their teachers were paid much more than everywhere else, but that would present a lot of problems. But great teachers, and then the other thing is extra time. We need to support students' access to extra time. It doesn't have to be a longer school day. It can be through other structures. But great teachers and more time will clearly result, more time with those great educators will result in acceleration. And anything we can do, strategy-wise, or perhaps policy-wise, to make more time with great teachers, we will see results. It's easy to say that. It's not that easy to do it, though.
Those are the policy, those are the policy implications for, for us, right? Like, these ideas of what creates more time or what, you know? We obviously have the resource conversation, but there are bigger sort of systems decisions where negotiating contracts and doing all these things that are important for us to be thinking about. What would actually drive accelerated improvement? But I'm out of time thinking.
Can I just add? The superintendent has been pushing us as a team to, to really look at some of the things that you talked about, which is at the, at the student level, what are the needs that they have? And how do we look at acceleration academy, summer programming, tutoring, tier-two, tier-three interventions in a very targeted way while not disrupting the foundation on tier-one instruction? Like, those two things have to be looked at in tandem. But she, I just want to assure you that that is something that just as recently as last week, gathered us together to make sure we are really looking very closely at the student level and those different leverage points.
Helpful, thank you.
First, I'd like to, first, I'd like to start by thanking you for the presentation and caring about such a prominent issue. So, my question is, as I was looking at like the data, I saw that there was such a drastic, there was a disparity between the growth and MCAS scores from three to eight to the grade 10. And I was just wondering how you guys are looking at that information and what support you guys are providing during this transitional phase for the students to ensure that next cohort will improve their test scores? Because I know moving on from middle school to high school is a very, is a very big transition. And I was just wondering what you guys are providing there.
Are these the two slides you were talking about, the grade three to eight?
Uh, yeah.
So, there's, good question, thank you. We do, we have a district-wide strategy, but then there's some things we focus much more in elementary schools and others that are much more focused on our high schools. If you look at growth, which is the, the right-hand columns here, we can see that they're not that different from three to eight to high school. And there is a really big difference in the makeup of the schools in three to eight and high schools because we have very large exam schools that have taken students from the three to eight schools and brought them into these very large schools that aren't represented here. And those are a lot of students with higher achievement. So, even if growth looks sort of the same, the high school achievement looks different because the makeup of the students is somewhat different. So, that's one thought I have about the information. But we talked a lot about the absenteeism. And I'll go back to just, that's much higher at the high schools than it is at the three to eights. And many of our three to eights actually have higher attendance than the BPS average. So, I think one really strong thing we can do to help our high schools is help focus on the high school attendance and anything that we can all do to support that. These schools have all the responsibilities that other schools have, but they're trying to do a lot of extra work around absenteeism. So, any extra work that we can give this set of high schools in support of, of attendance, I think, would be very, very helpful.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Neill, and then back to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a real sobering presentation. And this has been a really good discussion. And I appreciated all the points that have been brought up, so I'll try not to touch on those. So, I do have a follow-up to what Dr. Alkin's asked about budget, because I thought, I really appreciate that conversation, but I want to go a little further on it. But first, I wondered, have we disaggregated the data on achievement between students who are in school and students who are chronically absent? So, have we actually looked at the achievement levels of those who are chronically absent and those who are not? Do we know that data?
I believe we have done that at the district level, but not within transformation schools.
Not within transformation schools.
But that is something we.
Because you talked about Madison Park, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt. I'll let you finish.
No, that's.
Okay.
I look forward to trying to do that.
Okay. Because you talked about Madison Park and the conversation with families. And part of the conversation with families, I would assume, would be, here's the impact if your child misses it. Because when you talk to school leaders, and particularly at the early school grades, I've heard school leaders repeatedly say, you know, when they talk to parents, it's, oh, well, Johnny's not feeling well, or Sally's feeling a little second, you know, they're better to stay home today, that type of thing. Or, it's a Friday and they've had a long week. I'm sure Dr. Grasser could give me plenty of examples of the stories she hears from, from parents about why a child doesn't end. But when you bring it home for them about, look, here's what starts to happen year after year, the more they're chronically absent, the more the, I'm making an assumption that there is a achievement level, but it'd be interesting to know the data. So, I want to follow up on what Dr. Alkin's asked about budget. But I want to flip it a little bit, particularly to Dr. Grasser, since we have a school leader in front of us, highly experienced, multi-year school leader. So, let me phrase the question slightly different. If you were given a pool of money and, you know, some of the things Mr. Saban has talked about is coaching, professional development, high-quality materials, and even potentially tutoring. I don't think we're doing tutoring now, but you mentioned as an option. If you, Dr. Grasser, was just given increased funds, where would you think it'd be best put to use? What would you want to aim towards?
I hope you don't regret my answer to this.
It's okay, or you may say something different.
So, we actually do have tutoring in transformation schools. You can either offer acceleration academy or acceleration tutoring. So, at Curly Kate, we did acceleration tutoring in both the winter and the spring, last spring. So, we do have.
Those are doing the vacations, right? I didn't mean to interrupt.
We chose not to do the vacation week. We chose to do like 10-week intensive tutoring after school or before school with students, where a teacher was able to do some really targeted supports. We looked at student data and chose students who would be able to get those targeted supports with, with our teachers. So, it was instead of an acceleration academy. So, that already does exist for transformation schools.
So, again, to follow up, as we're looking at this and we're saying, you know, should these schools be taken off the table as an option? Or should we go deeper in trying to support and improve? If, if, as we get to budget cycle, and that's why I'm thrilled we're having this conversation now, right? Because for many years, we've lamented that we don't get to tie together policy decisions with budgetary decisions. So, if we were to push for increased funding for transformational schools, how would you envision spending it as a school leader? As opposed to the district mandating, here's what you would do.
Sure. I can only speak specifically about my own school.
Of course.
However, I would encourage you to visit all of these schools, because I don't think anyone would feel like there's spoiled milk in any of these places when you go there. When you meet these students, when you meet these educators and you see the hard work they're doing each and every day. I would say, for me, around our inclusion and making sure that we have supports, particularly, I have a huge population of students in substantially separate. That is something that is very specific to my school. I know there are other schools on that list who are similar, but not all schools are in that same boat. And I think having supports that our, our students in substantially separate have opportunities to be included throughout the school day, whether it refers to a small portion of the day, half the day, or throughout the whole day. It is not possible to do without the supports. Whether that is additional paraprofessionals, whether, whether that is additional educators within the space. It is absolutely necessary to ensure that our students have access, to ensure that we are meeting the compliance needs for both our students with disabilities and our multilingual learners. And it's also important for our educators to make sure they are not feeling burnt out. We heard several educators speak about that during open, public comment today. However, my school doesn't have people who are teaching alone all day. But we have targeted and spent a lot of time around restructuring our building, around our adults having the appropriate certifications. I also think some money should go into supporting our educators and funding them seeking these additional certs, so teachers aren't spending this money on their own. Funding the tests, they're expensive. And some of our youngest educators coming out of college don't have money right now to pay $100 every time, or more actually, think to take a test and to seek a certification. And really, I think some money for schools to really step away from the school and do some strategic planning as a community that involves families, that involves the district, that involves the Boston Teachers Union, that involves the leadership team, where they can step away and really think about strategic time of how they can plan and move forward as a community. But I think that those are how I would particularly spend the money. I also think reading specialists.
Great, thank you.
And helping our, our most needy kids learn how to read.
And I do have a, a question about literacy, so thank you for bringing that up. But I, I also want to, I was thinking about, as I was looking at your student breakdown and the results sub-aggregated, how it's so hard to think in terms of the other list of the schools overall that just show a percentile and think about their individual student populations. I mean, every school has its own story, right? Its own challenges. And so, thank you for pointing that out. I, I am intrigued, and this, this won't surprise some folks that I'm asking this question, because I've pushed on it for a little while now. I think a number of us have been saying literacy is job one. And we're bought in on equitable literacy. We also know there's a variety of curriculum options. And that the school leaders have, in effect, chosen the curriculum that they want to use. And sometimes there's a push from regional superintendents and sometimes, and, and we've also been told it takes a couple of years and the professional development is just as important as the material. But Mr. Saban, we've had this conversation. At what point do we say, that isn't working for you and this curriculum is working? So, Dr. Grasser, again, sorry to keep going to you, but we have a school leader right in front of us. I'm, I'm intrigued by your thoughts around the curriculum for, the curriculum options for equitable literacy, kind of how you chose which ones you did and how far you're into it and how you feel they're working.
I didn't choose. And I'll be honest, I was one of the leaders who pushed back about that. But however, as I've seen the consistent implementation across the district, I actually think it is a very important decision. I think consistent implementation of curriculum across the district is necessary. One, we know our children are transient. We know that they move school to school and around the city. And it should be that if you move from East Boston to Jamaica Plain, you should be able to pick up right where you left off. You should be in fourth grade, you should be reading Love That Dog like every other student in fourth grade, and you should be able to, to hop right in. And that's why it's important that we follow pacing guides, that we are using the curriculum. I fully do support that, and that was a shift in mindset for me as a leader. I also think teaching reading is incredibly complex. Every child is very different in teaching, in teaching them how to read. Yes, we, we are implementing Hagerty. Yes, we are implementing foundations and our kids have those skills. But then you have to, have to think about comprehension. And it is a really truly complex piece. And the, a lot of the professional development that is being offered around understanding literacy, particularly the letters training, my teachers, I've seen a huge significant difference in their ability to deliver instruction to students as they are getting better and deeper understanding about how children become literate through the science of reading. And so, I would continue to support that, those professional development opportunities.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
There's a, a couple of things. So, so interestingly, as I was diving into, again, the accountability percentile slide, I was actually doing some of that, that, that math and sort of the, what I saw that even in the non-high school slides, what's interesting is, is that you had about 13 schools that have shown negative, a negative trend. But only half of those have that consistently, like, going downward or that consistent negative trend, which is interesting, because that's telling me that seven out of those schools actually improved and then slipped back into it. So, I'm actually curious as to how you all are thinking about a strategy around supporting those schools? Because it's like, wow, we've seen tremendous growth. Some of them, I think, like you, you pointed out, are that we know exactly what happened with this school. And then some of it seems to be like a, somewhat of a gradual progression and then a drop-off. And so, I'm, I'm wondering how you all are, are thinking about that also. And I'd be remiss if I didn't go back to your comment about the education system and knowing being broken. And it's just funny to, to hear that, because we're part of that system. So, I think we, like, also in your comment, I just want to name, like, our own role and responsibility in, in that, for better or for worse.
I confess I'm broken.
So, thank you for your question. I think we're the office whose, schools are given to us based on the accountability system, based on MCAS. We buy into the whole system. But I do want to say there are some limitations to it that we also have to keep in mind. And these can be very, very frustrating to teachers and to principals. So, for example, we want everyone to have growth over 50. But it's statistically impossible for more than half to have growth over 50. It's defined as the midpoint. So, we're striving to get all of our schools over 50. The way we do that is by learning more than other districts. That's what it comes down to. But half the state is below 50 and half is above. So, we're, the state has us aspiring to something that we want to achieve. But it is also mathematically impossible for everyone in the state to achieve it. Likewise, with accountability, there are 150 schools in the state in the bottom 10 percentiles. And there always will be. That's how it's made. So, sometimes moving down means a couple of schools somewhere else jumped over you. It doesn't mean you went down. So, while we take these numbers extremely seriously, the one we should go back to probably is the student achievement number, which is the scaled score. That's the one that can go up everywhere.
Right.
And so, I, so, in a way, my answer to your question is, we have to look very carefully at every school. Going up a point and then down a point, it could mean a lot of different things. Not necessarily bad. It could mean that the testing grade has a new teacher. And the veteran teacher or a high-performing teacher is not at the testing grade. And we're not just switching people around to get better test scores. We want, so, we're at once very sensitive to those numbers, but I think we want. but I think we want them to lead us to ask questions, not to make judgments because there's real stories behind them. That's what we really need to understand. However, the schools that have multiple years of decline, there becomes a point at which there's a story being told in the numbers that is more troubling. And I think we're getting to the point where taking that very seriously and making sure we're giving those schools, doing our utmost to support those schools.
Thank you. And so similar to that, the other slide that pops out at me, to your point about the chronic absenteeism, is actually delving into that. Slides 33 and 34 around how we're not seeing the closure of that gap between chronic absenteeism in transformation schools versus non-transformation schools. Like whenever you get to it, it's fine.
Sure.
No, so I mean, this is more, this is a curious question of, are you all learning of any particular strategies that are working at the transformation schools? That, for learning more about the strategies that you should be using? Or is it just more of what we're seeing across all the schools? Or is there anything that's unique to the transformation schools that you all are seeing? That they need a particular level of support of or a unique support?
I think, I think there's different opinions on this.
Okay.
So you're going, I guess, to get my opinion?
Yeah.
And it isn't the same as everyone's? But I think we visit hundreds of classrooms. And in my opinion, and we know from looking at the demographic data that we review repeatedly, there are more English learners in transformation schools than non-transformation schools. There are more students with disabilities. There are more high need students, however you measure that, in this set of schools than the non-transformation schools. And I think that all students are completely welcome in our schools. You hear from every time a school presents, students are embraced 100%. But one pressure created by more high need students is lots and lots of attention spent to is a student accessing the class? And that can over time bring the level of rigor and challenge down. And if I were to say the pattern I see most, not at all everywhere, but what we're noticing the most, it's that the daily level of challenge can just get that little bit lower that when you repeat that by multiple classes a day over years, that may account for a big part of the difference we're seeing. And one of the reasons we support the high quality materials is that if those are implemented the way they're designed, they will ensure the grade level expectations. And then we'll do lots of work to help all students access those. But there's a tendency that those expectations can slip downwards. So I would say the bulk of our work is how do we raise expectations while maintaining the wonderful sense of belonging and access for all students across these schools? That's the pattern that I think we're seeing and working on.
And from that, I think it will be helpful for us. I mean, even on all of these slides, I think even just to, particularly with regard to literacy, is to input visually like a bar so that when we know when high quality instructional materials were implemented. Because I think that becomes like a big turning point in how you're thinking about the data. Like post 100% implementation of this versus prior to that. And I think that will also help us see progress like for that. But yes, I appreciate the, I appreciate the answers.
And Leslie, if you have something to add here, you can. But I think we're seeing extremely high implementation in the transformation schools.
Right.
But how you implement something is now what we're working on. And I'll just give you a very, very simplistic example of what we're pushing for. You give a student an assignment, and I was in a class today at one of our schools where they were supposed, they were writing a multi paragraph essay in a fifth grade. It's part of the curriculum. You could give that assignment, the student does the best they can to write the essay, and then you move on. That's implementing high qual, that's implementing the curriculum. Or you could give the assignment, the student writes the essay, you give them a piece of feedback and have them apply the feedback to make their essay stronger. That's the curriculum implemented with high expectations. And if you repeat that cycle over and over, the class getting the feedback and trying again, or the student getting that day after day and year after year, is going to move much more than the student who is using the curriculum, but not with the same level of high expectations. So I think we've switched, just even in the two years that I've been here, from pushing to use the curriculum to pushing to use the curriculum with the highest possible expectations, which I think is a good change. And we're seeing, you probably remember that the Holmes presented and Dearborn in the spring as two schools that were doing quite well with literacy. And I think we highlighted there that they were using the district curriculum with the highest possible expectations. And that's an example, that's, we have faith that when schools fully do that, we're going to see great results.
Thank you. Do you have a question before I go?
You can go. How do you want to do it? You're in charge.
Go ahead. You go.
All right. Well, to your point about the Holmes, I got to visit the Holmes and saw instruction and it was incredible. The 60% growth in the LA makes total sense just based on what we saw. Yeah, that was a very, it was a very special school. And so, you know, it's interesting because we've had this conversation when both of you were not here. But it is my struggle always in talking about transformation schools because there is this category we've created that you have to come for compliance purposes and present to us. And in agreement, not all transformation schools are equal. No, nor are they categorically the same, right? The story of the Holmes with the 60% growth is very different than insert another school who saw less. There is a data point that we aren't discussing. We talked about this, I don't know if you were here for our last, when we were talking about MCAS. I have a lot of curiosity around, because I agree with you, like the growth is a really important number, but it is a numbers game. In a perfect world, our schools with, kids with lowest proficiency would see the greatest growth. The number starts to balance out because kids who are on grade level are growing less because they're just moving with the grade level. So it's a numbers game and then at some moment, it's like, not a numbers game because the grade, the real vision is that the bottom is growing faster to even out the numbers game. What we aren't seeing is proficiency data. And I am hoping that we can have access to that data. Proficiency data, and I am curious as a growth story in like proficiency data that is cohort aligned. So like really moving, I'm thinking about myself, that's the only data point I cared about. I was a turnaround principal. That was the data point that really moved me with success and failure. Like what a cohort was actually doing in terms of proficiency year over year, with an understanding that turnaround schools and transformation schools have mobile communities who are, you know, like it's much more transient and all of those things to be true. It's never a perfect dataset. None of this is a perfect dataset, but it gives us something to have and understand. So I am curious about that. And I also am curious just around, and this I would like to, for someone to send us, but what percentage of the schools are under enrolled? And what percentage of students at these schools are administratively placed? And we requested that. I know it was a late request possibly, so wasn't able to get in. But I think that's a really important part of the conversation for us on bigger policy questions around the sort of the choices families have and the choices they're making. The question that I do have though here is actually for our principal.
Sorry, this computer's about to go dead. That's projecting, so distracting.
I hope you don't need those slides anymore, so maybe it's like a gift. My question is for you. I asked the question about policy, the sort of policy things we should be thinking about that might accelerate. But from a principal standpoint, is, are there policies we should be thinking about here or discussing on this body that would also make the work for you easier? Either from a human capital management or just the ability to support kids differently? So less about resources, because as much as I love this resource conversation, based on all of the reports, it does not look like more money is coming into our system. Probably to the contrary, if all, you know, with all of these sort of bigger conversations about, you know, new taxes. But what we can do is shape, make policy decisions that allow principals to do their job differently. And so I am curious, is there anything that you think about that was like, if these things were happening? I had a million of them when I was a principal. Like what, what, what are they and what should we be thinking about?
This is for me, correct?
I think so.
This isn't a policy, but we are a resource-rich city. I think we have to close some schools in Boston. I know nobody wants to talk about that. But we should have full schools that we can fully provide the services there for the students and make sure we have the staffing in those spaces to make sure the students have the same opportunities to get specialty classes such as art, music, physical education, dance, theater. And so I actually think that we have the money and the resources in the Boston Public Schools and we need to rethink about how to reallocate it so that our students are getting what they need and not, we just, we don't have enough students to fund the teacher. We're going to fund the teacher in this space. It would also help with transportation concerns and many other things.
You're speaking my language.
I also know it would be devastating in communities. I'm not trying to say closing schools is easy.
No.
And that is a simple solution because it isn't. But if you're just thinking from a financial standpoint, that would be a piece that I would think about.
Yeah. And then being able to think about human capital differently across the system, right? Like where can we deploy people once those schools are full?
Absolutely. We have amazing educators in the Boston Public Schools.
Yeah. Anything else that you think we should be thinking about?
I think we have to be thinking about our transportation. I know we were celebrating some really positive things here tonight, but some of us are part of the 3%. That everyone is not at school on time. And when you have two school buses of children that are missing two and a half hours of instruction every morning because they are not on time to school, or families who didn't, their bus hasn't come a couple of days in a row, so they're missing school. It's adding to the chronic absenteeism. I think that this is a really crucial place that we need to focus on because getting our children to school on time ensures that they aren't anxious, ensures that they are fed, ensures that they have time to acclimate with their friends and their classmates, ensures that they're not missing any instruction is really crucial. And particularly for our most marginalized students, multilingual learners and students with disabilities, ensures they're not missing any instruction and they have a clear set routine.
Yeah, it's about routine.
That we can follow, that they know what's going to happen. Because when you are late and your routine is off, we often have a hard time acclimating into the space.
Yeah. It's like any of us when we're late, right? Like if I'm showing up late to work, I'm like a mess, I'm sweating, it's not a good thing. My first, the beginning is off. I also think about you, your charge to the first question of this section is to accelerate growth faster than your peers at non-transformation schools. And it is really hard to do if a subset of kids are late consistently. So I see you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for the presentation. Glad to see you again. I enjoyed visiting with your school last year and hope to come back again this year. A couple of things for me. One of the things that I ask for over and over again is disaggregated data. And even though we have the groupings, I really would like the subgroups to be disaggregated. I still don't understand how English-speaking native-born black boys are doing. They're just in a category of black that includes students from Africa, students from the Caribbean, all kinds of things. We really need to understand how the groups within the subgroups are actually doing. That would be helpful. We are a district that loves choice, but sometimes I think offering choice actually exacerbates some of the problems that we experience. I look particularly at the 19 points on the GREU with the, and heard today that 50% of the educators moved. Well, that's great for them, but that's not great for the kids. And so the question is, again, whether it's policy or what, what do we know and understand about how much movement, particularly in our transformation schools, upsets the apple cart? And then how do we implement it to say in a small school, you know, no more than three people could leave in a year versus eight or 10? I don't know what those magic numbers are, but when we can see how that disrupts the education for kids, I get it adults should have an opportunity to grow. But the only reason why we have a school district is because we have kids. So should we allow decisions to be made to support adults, but often, on the other hand, hurt children? And again, because that's why we're here to improve student outcomes, I want to protect what's in the best interest of kids. And so how do we have a both then? So that, you know, adults can do what they need to do without harming kids? And I guess, you know, I said again, how much transition is just too much? You said tonight something was upsetting, that some of this data was upsetting. I guess the word I want to say it's unacceptable. We've got schools that have been in transition for a long time. You said that the growth of the ELA for the Ellis School was the highest in 15 years. How many generations of kids have come through a building that continues to be underperforming? No kid stays in any building for 15 years, six years, eight years. So what's not happening? So do we have to peel back and look at how we are assigning kids? Who are we allowing, who are we allowing to choose the school even though they may love a lot of things about it? They're not getting the quality of education that they should be. So how do we help inform choice or hold choice accountable? Because I just don't want to love my teachers, but then find out five years later I still can't read. You know, so, and I think sometimes our parents don't always truly understand what is or isn't happening for their kids because I think, you know, or when they do, they're alarmed that they didn't realize this at an earlier point. So it's not about being nice, it's about being effective. And the question is, is that our responsibility to say, after three years, this is over, we cannot allow this to continue? We work carefully and closely with you, truly appreciate all the things that are happening. But to see this yet again is hard. And it's like, what can we stop? So I'll turn back to you, Dr. Grassa. If there was one thing you could say, stop, end this tomorrow, we need to do this, I don't care. I'm not, you know, I know the union is listening, but I'm just saying, what do we truly need to be doing if we're going to deliver the promise of a wonderful education to Boston's children?
I think I'm going into my 14th or 15th hour of work right now, so I'm going to try to keep it straight. It takes more than three years. You can look at my data at my school. You will never, families love the Curly. We're full. We have a million, we have lots of kids. We have wait lists. But it takes more than three years. It takes time to change habits. It takes time to change behavior. It takes time to build buy-in, to, to, to learn how to collaborate and to do things differently. If you think about our own habits as adults, changing a habit we've done for a long time is not an easy thing. And it's not an easy shift. I also think we need to start spinning our narratives to be more positive about our schools. We are in a national teacher shortage because people don't want to go into education because the narrative is that teaching is not good. And I think there are things that we could do, spin narratives about our school, build positivity, create some sort of campaigns about this amazing learning lab at the Ellis and talking about what's happening in this learning lab. What's the learning lab, what's the learning that the adults doing, that the kids are doing? And how do we get those narratives out there? Because positivity can build upon that. People want to work in places where they feel like they can grow and learn. Families want to be a part of places where they can grow and learn. People are more excited to come to work and to be part of a community when that is a part of it. And so I do think we have to really think about how we spin our narratives and how we talk about our communities and how we build these cultures out so that they are positive and that people want to be a part of it and be there. Because it's not for a lack of people working really hard. It's not for a lack of having brilliant children because we know we have brilliant children. brilliant children, because we know we have brilliant children, we know we have hard-working adults. So how do we get them to collectively work towards one singular mission? And it takes more than three years.
It does.
Thank you. I have other questions, but the night is getting on and we will be coming back to you. But again, thank you so much for this. Thank you for the level of detail that you did give us. I mean, it is this accountability, percentiles. I hope that we can have more of a combination, sorry, conversation around those, particularly on the, on the schools that have continued to go up and down. Again, to sort of disagi, to sort of peel back and understand what were happening in those high years versus what were happening as things went up and down. What are the things that are within our control to change? And, you know, what, what other different kinds of resources we might need to be putting in place? You know, I've said over and over again that we have wonderful kids, we have kids who have a lot of needs and I question whether or not we are able or are resourcing our schools in ways that we can really meet the needs of the kids that we have. And I think we have to be honest with ourselves first about who we're really trying to educate to make sure that we can tell that story, to help us make sure the right resources are in place in all of the places where they are. But again, thank you all for the, for the work.
Just follow up on, on some comments. I understand it takes more than three years. I was hoping that job security hanging on somebody's head would accelerate the three years. But let's say the three years, that you're saying that, you know, it takes more than three years. Would there be an endpoint where despite all the union progressive disciplinary action or whatever it is and all these grievances, is there, is there something that, this is my first question, I have a number, but just to be quick, is there a endpoint? You know, aside from saying that, okay, I understand, you know, there's, there is an estimation that it would make more than three years. But I hate to see that, you know, the, the progress is not making after three years and, and, you know, we allow another three years? I don't know. That's, that's my first question. The second question is, I, I, I may, I may agree with you, but this question, I may agree with you, but I just want to, just to follow up on Brandon's, oh, I'm sorry. The reason I call him Brandon is he's now my friend. But Member Hernandez. Question about, about the kind of policies that you want us to consider? And you did offer a possible solution? And I'm just trying to reaffirm so that it can edge in my memory. And later on, I, I may agree with you and I may bring, bring it out on, on our policy What you suggest is that despite the fact that we have resources, in my view, financial resources in the city, even though are there, but not enough. And that one of the suggestions coming from you personally, not, not everybody else, but you. And I do agree that in order to, that, that we may, we may need to reallocate funding. That is also in, in, in line with Member O'Neill's suggestion as well. We may need to reallocate funding to support schools at the controversial steps that we may be forced to take despite unions, whatever, parental, unions, disagreement or parental disagreement is that, you know, in order to reallocate resources, we may need to close school. And we may need to reassign teachers, teaching staff. And then that would redound back to the question of three-year implementation of progress. You understand what I'm trying to say? I know I'm jumbling around, but you know, the essence is, the question is there.
For me?
For you. For you, Dr., sorry.
So I don't really believe in fear motivation. I think that I'm an Atwill employee as a principal in the Boston Public Schools, I'm not part of a union. I think that, you know, three years, you can certainly do things in three years and you can make progress in three years. I just think it is really difficult to make the sustained progress. And I think we saw this back in 2010. I had the pleasure of joining Turnaround Schools in 2010, where we let go 50% of our staff, we let go of the principals, we brought in new principals, we brought in new teachers. And many of those schools are still on the list. And so I'm not sure that that is the right strategy because we've already tried that strategy and it didn't work. And so that's just my opinion on it.
I would love to just add something to that. I think your question's getting to this change in strategy nationally and in the state. There was a time period of 2008 to 2015, that was a time of heightened urgency and we were part of turnaround together. And the idea was the most radical intervention possible in schools. And it sometimes worked and it sometimes didn't. But it was concluded that it was very disruptive, often to the highest needs students, most vulnerable families. It inflicted suffering in some cases on the people that were trying to be helped and in other cases it worked. But a new strategy is in place, which is much more about support and incremental improvement in all schools. We've been part of both. I'm sure we like parts of both systems. But I think what, the way we should think about it is not in terms of number of years or timelines. There are situations that are unacceptable. Maybe it's just a classroom that has a series of substitute teachers in it. That's not okay. We shouldn't be doing that to students. We have to figure out a way for those things not to happen. They are unacceptable. So we have to feel the urgency that we were acting on from 2010 to 2015. But creating chaos out of that feeling isn't necessarily productive, although it's understandable. So this goes in a way to our situation with the literacy curriculum. It's not working the way we want yet. If we just flipped it for another curriculum, we'd be back at step one. We have to train everyone, we have to train our coaches. It's not like you would just change something and it immediately works. You'd be talking about years of rebuilding. And so we need to have urgency and build incrementally. And so I think trying to find that balance is what we need to do and we need to do that together. We, we don't just wait for multiple years hoping something happens. We should see signs of progress immediately. But we also have to understand that when we're seeing progress, we probably shouldn't panic too soon because Ellis and Curly at two different stages of development are interesting examples. Dearborn's another really good example that we looked at in the spring where it's taken time and if it goes well, we're going to see that growth accelerate and continue over time. So I, I think you're identifying a tension that is something we're probably all thinking about.
Thank you.
I know it's getting late, so I'll make this quick, but I think that what we're hearing this evening is we have families that should not have to wait. One year, two years, three years. And we, when, when I mentioned earlier, the superintendent is really pushing us to really look at individual student level. And that individual student level is really important because we can't afford, like, we heard some great examples of Dr. Grassa talking about, you know, 12 years at her school. It's taken 12 years at her school. And she's looking very closely at all of her students, as you saw on one of the slides. She's making great growth with some students and there's some students, she, I know, she's, she's shared this before, where they're looking very explicitly at certain groups of students where more work is needed too. And so this work does take time and I think this tension, we have to reconcile around how long are we going to have families wait? And let's also be serious that there are certain students whose families are waiting longer than others in our system.
Yeah, generations waiting.
Again, thank you very much and we look forward to the next time we will be back with you and hearing more about the progress. Thank you.
Thank you for listening and for your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, now we turn to public comment.
Just no public comment?
Thanks, thank you. Is there any new business?
Yes, I have a new business.
Okay.
I received information that a school of River Burger, yeah, que el distrito había solicitado, el distrito solicitó a des un programa de SLY en multilingüe, right? Entonces, yo quiero que traer esto a la mesa porque el programa, la población más alta de esta escuela ahora mismo es Haitian Creole.
So to my understanding, the Orenberger, they put in an application.
No, the, the district putting the application at the.
On behalf of the Orenberger?
Yeah.
Okay. So the district put in an application on behalf of the Orenberger for a program that was multilingual and this school supports a population that is mostly Haitian Creole?
I think maybe she have a little confused. Oops, sorry. I want to, I want to explain in English. I'm trying, patience for me, please.
You got you.
Go ahead.
The district putting application at this for a SLY program, multilingue. My point is, is the more majority population in this particular school is Haitian Creole. I have the teacher in Haitian Creole, why not put in that request, the SLY in Haitian Creole? Because I have the teacher in Haitian Creole. You know why? Because the Nata language is, is good moment for this particular school in a SLY program. You understand my point?
So are you saying that they should be, instead of doing a multilingual program?
Yeah.
They should be focusing it on Haitian Creole?
Yeah, because the district are putting the request at this for a SLY program, right? And multilingue, no specific in Haitian Creole. My question is, why not put in Haitian Creole? Because then talk to about the Nata language, right? They, they, porque es importante, why is important Nata language? Try in the school. Now, eh, eh, this particular school is good example because I have the teacher in Haitian Creole, I have the student in Haitian Creole a lot. Because some, some student speak Spanish, it's a little right now. And more student in Haitian Creole. And then I think it's intentional, it's good moment for the district say intentional in the practice Nata language in the school.
So you're saying focus the resources on that particular school population, which is the majority Haitian Creole population?
Yes, yeah. Yeah.
So.
Lot of students is the Haitian Creole.
So there are specific students who require SLY services and we cannot just add a program. We have to apply to DESI for, for the program. So that is why that application went through. And I think in terms of a bilingual program, whether it's transitional bilingual program or dual-language program in Haitian Creole, we're happy to work with the Orenberger community to put forth, just like we have been with the Blackstone and with some other schools, where that is something that the community would like to move forward with. I understand what you're saying. It seems like, hey, you've got a Haitian Creole speaking teacher.
Yeah.
And we want to make sure that she.
Have a the place. Eh, lot of population Haitian Creole is student. And the teacher, all the time, the teacher, miss, love teacher or miss teacher. Now, it's good moment. I have a teacher in Haitian Creole, I have a student, a lot of population in Haitian Creole. Why not put in a SLY program in Haitian Creole?
We, we're happy to work closely, more closely with the Orenberger community to, to look into having a program for bilingual. And I think in this case, especially in that SLY class, if that teacher is teaching the class, it's very advantageous, even if it's not formally a bilingual class, that the teacher understands and speaks the language and can actually communicate with students and leverage native language in those students, even if it's not a formal bilingual class. That can still be something that is done, but I hear what you're saying. We should work closely with the community on whether or not Haitian Creole program would be a good addition and, and something that, you know, we certainly support bilingual programs. So, so thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah.
I, I have one, one new business. This is, this is not for, for the school staff, but for us. Given the fact that the inclusion initiative is moving forward one way or another, it's, it's implementing. And I do recognize that the, the ELL Subcommittee has now been defunct for maybe a year already. I strongly make, I, if, if it is through motion, I will do that. But, you know, I strongly suggest that we should among ourselves make a public discussion regarding whether the ELL Subcommittee be.
Instated.
You know, be, be.
Yeah. This is something that we are going to talk about at the retreat.
Okay.
Because we want to talk about the, the structure of our work together, but also about the subcommittees, their relationship to the, to this body and our responsibility for being on them and moving forward. So yes, this will be discussed at the retreat.
Thank you.
So absolutely, Monday retreat.
Monday, Monday retreat.
New business.
Oh, sorry. No, 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 I'm, I'm.
My question is, and maybe this can come to us in a memo, I'm going back to my original question from the beginning of the night. We operate BPS with, my understanding is, there are graduation requirements that we've elected to as a district, like taking Mass Core as a, the recommended Mass Core requirements. And then we've released policy that says we're adopting that. And then we also say in that policy document that we will follow the state guidelines around physical education, civics, and MCAS 10th grade passing scores. If ballot measure two goes through, are we changing graduation requirements? And the scare, so I think we just have to, like, we need to have that conversation, there should be a memo of like, what is going to happen if it goes through? Will we keep graduation requirements as is? Will we get rid of the state graduation requirements and only keep Mass Core? I feel like we're being cute not talking about it. And so I just, I want to make sure there's, there's like a, a day after conversation that can either come to us in a memo. It's now getting late because we won't have a meeting before it. But I just think we need to know, there should be, I mean, God, I hope there is a plan of what we are doing and that it, because it's late for schools to like, you know, plan for. But I'm just curious where we are and I think we should be having a conversation about it. Graduation requirements specifically, this is an interesting moment that my understanding is this body had, did talk about, or at least when I got here, we were talking about graduation requirements that we were adopting. And so this is actually that moment. I know last time we were together, the superintendent, like, we don't talk about these because they're outside of us, but we talk about graduation requirements here. And so curious what we're doing, is there a memo that can come to us? It was a very long question, but I'm tired.
Yes.
I hear you.
Yeah, I hear you and I hope that we will be able to have some update at the retreat.
Perfect.
With a sense of what direction. But again, waiting to hear from the state, which is the overall governance. Okay.
But not giving our agency away to the state. So like, we can wait to hear from the state of like, here's your guidance, but part of what is happening is. But part of what is happening is further local control over graduation requirements. It's a deregulation of the state with us having all of the regulatory responsibilities around how kids will graduate. And so, yes, it's like we can wait till November sixth and be like, what does DESI tell us? But like, there's a part of us that we know what they will tell us. We have now gotten rid of MCAS as a requirement, and cities, municipalities, towns have to make graduation determinations for themselves. And so we should be doing that work preemptively. All right.
All right, thank you.
God bless America.
Madam Chair, thoughtful question.
Yeah.
I agree with the need for the discussion. Completely different matter. We heard in public comment from Mr. Keandre McClay, who is the new executive director of Beja. And I want to point out, he was our student representative for two years, I believe.
I love that.
And so it's actually, and when he was our student representative, he was very thoughtful in his comments at all times. So I look forward to that continuing in his new role. I want to congratulate him on his new role and just connect the dots for folks that he sat here for two years. And now he'll be here talking to us on screen, I'm sure. So, congratulations, Mr. McClay.
All right. That concludes our business for this evening. Our next hybrid school committee meeting will take place in person on Wednesday, November sixth, at six PM at the Bowling Building. Prior to that meeting, the committee will host an in-person retreat on Monday, this coming Monday, October twenty-eighth, here at the Bowling Building. The retreat will give members an opportunity to reconnect and position us for a successful school year. The retreat will not be broadcast, but will be open to the public. I would like to, and the meeting, is there a motion? Some, thank you, is there a second? Thank you, is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chen.